Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 20th, 2025 continuation of the Glendale City Council meeting. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakyan.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag salute? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and welcome Rabbi Simcha Bachman from the Chabad of Glendale and the Foothill Communities to lead us in the invocation.
Esteemed mayor, council members, and gathered community, let us pause for a moment of reflection. Master of the universe, we thank you for granting us life, health, and the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. We stand here in the city of Glendale, a city blessed with diversity, compassion, and resilience. May we be reminded that leadership is a sacred trust, a call to serve with humility, integrity, and vision. We ask you to bless the members of this council with wisdom and clarity as they deliberate and decide. May their actions reflect justice, kindness, and the highest good for all its residents. In a world often divided, let us, let this chamber be a place of unity and respective, respectful dialogue. May each decision made here bring light, peace, and progress to our city. The second-century Jewish texts, the Mishnah states, pray for the welfare of the government, for were it not for them, people would devour one another. This ancient wisdom reminds us of the importance of good governance, of leadership grounded in responsibility and moral clarity. I'd like to close with a small blessing in honor of Memorial Day, when we will pause as a nation with reverence and humility to honor the brave men and women who gave their lives in defense of our country and who made the ultimate sacrifice so we could live in freedom and safety. May God bless the memories of our heroes and bless their families. May God bless the city of Glendale and bless the United States of America. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move to the next item. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the May 20th, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 16th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And to the next item.
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is an announcement that there will be no city council meetings on May 27, 2025. The next regular council and housing authority meetings will be on June 3rd, 2025.
Thank you. And the next item, please.
Next is a proclamation designating May 18th through 24, 2025 as National Public Works Week.
Okay, Public Works fans, who's here with you, supporting you today, Mr. Hernandez?
So we have a pretty big group. I'd like to invite him up shortly, but if I can, I would like to say a few words.
Yes, you may. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Najarian, and members of the city council. First, I would like to thank and express my appreciation to the council for the proclamation and the recognition of National Public Works Week. Throughout the city, we have an excellent workforce of hardworking and committed public servants that provide high-level service to our community. However, I would be remiss if I didn't expressly highlight the value of the committed men and women of Public Works who ensure the city's infrastructure and our internal and external services operate smoothly. It is truly an honor to serve as the city's Public Works Director and lead such an amazing group of individuals, many of who are gathered here today in honor of the proclamation. I'd also like to highlight an important recognition we received from the United States Senate in 2019 via Senate Concurrent Resolution 15, which explicitly includes Public Works in Nation's First Responder Day. Typically, police and fire personnel are the first to come to mind when we think of first responders. This recognition by the U.S. Senate reflects the critical role Public Works plays in keeping our city running, especially during emergencies. I'm proud to work along such a dedicated team that consistently meets the challenges head-on, whether it's handling day-to-day tasks or responding to urgent situations like this year's windstorms. Their commitment to supporting the community is what drives our success. Lastly, I would like to thank the Public Works Planning Committee, led by co-chairs Lisa Rodriguez, Parking Service Supervisor, and Petra Beglarian, Public Works Manager, who organized the week's events for Public Works staff. With that, I would like to invite the Planning Committee and the Public Works staff, who are present, to step forward. Ed Nercissian, a civil engineering assistant within our Design Section, who is a member of the Planning Committee, will say a few words regarding this year's theme and introduce a video prepared by staff and GTV6. I thank you again for the recognition and the opportunity to serve the community. With that, I'll pass it over to Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
How you pack the house?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, and members of the city council. Today, we gather not only as a community, but as a family, to recognize and express our deepest gratitude to a group of individuals whose dedication, resilience, and service often go unseen, yet whose impact is felt in every corner of our city. I'm speaking, of course, about our extraordinary Public Works team. This year's theme for National Public Works Week is People, Purpose, Presence, which embodies the spirit of the men and women in our department. The people of our department are the heart and hands behind the work. The men and women of Public Works are our neighbors, our friends, and our quiet heroes in the background, making sure our city is well-maintained and running smoothly. Our staff has a deep sense of purpose, to serve our community and to perform duties that go easily unnoticed, but are necessary to keep our city beautiful and a place where people come from all over the world to visit. Our quiet presence may not always be seen, but it is felt throughout the city. During the devastating windstorm this year, our team's heroism shone brightly. While the city was urged to stay indoors, our staff worked tirelessly on the front lines, clearing debris, restoring infrastructure, and ensuring safety. We partnered closely with the Fire and Police Departments to manage fallen trees, downed power lines, and fire risks, all while working overtime to safeguard our residents. Thank you for proclaiming this week National Public Works Week in the city of Glendale. And now, we would like to share a short video honoring the incredible work of our department over the last year.
Cities aren't just built on roads and buildings. They're built on the people who bring them to life. This National Public Works Week, we celebrate the people of Glendale's Public Works Department, those who show up every day with purpose and presence. You feel their presence in every corner of Glendale, whether they're maintaining essential services, leading environmental initiatives, or engaging with residents. The impact of their work is seen and felt across the city. Our department is made up of dedicated individuals who are deeply invested in shaping a vibrant, sustainable city. They are problem solvers, innovators, and collaborators, working behind the scenes to keep Glendale thriving. When a devastating windstorm hit Glendale, our team mobilized quickly, clearing nearly 2,300 tons of debris, almost double the monthly average, and completing citywide debris removal in just four to five weeks, ahead of the six-to-eight-week estimate. Everything they do is driven by a clear purpose, to improve our community. Whether it's enhancing infrastructure, creating sustainable solutions, or revitalizing public spaces, their work is focused on building a better future. In the last year, Glendale Public Works has completed 11 capital improvement projects, including the award-winning San Fernando Beautification Project Phase 1 and the Citywide Cart Replacement Project. The San Fernando Road Beautification Project enhanced the corridor with drought-tolerant landscaping, creative crosswalks, new pavement, bike facilities, and accessibility upgrades, promoting sustainability and a safer, more enjoyable travel experience for all. Citywide cart replacement was a multi-year project to replace over 90,000 aging residential waste carts to meet SB 1383 standards with standardized colors and labeling. In addition to our CIP projects, the department has completed various facilities projects in partnership with other departments, including the Police Real-Time Intelligence Center, MAT Room, and Central Library Youth Space Renovation. To improve transparency and community engagement, we launched a new interactive GIS map for CIPs that provide real-time access to project details, making it easier for residents and stakeholders to stay informed. This year marked another leap forward in sustainability. We added several electric vehicles to our fleet, including a subcompact street sweeper, a mini-wheel loader, and five beeline buses, reducing emissions and leading the way to a cleaner Glendale. It's about more than just the work. It's the relationships we build and how we respond to our community's needs. Public Works is not just here to serve, but to collaborate and help shape Glendale's future. This week, we honored the people of Public Works, those who show up with purpose and are always present to make Glendale a better place. They are the heartbeat of our city.
Thank you. That's a great video. I'm glad you did it. You do so many things, and I'm glad you were able to point it out. And I hope people at home saw that and appreciate, I know they appreciate everything that Public Works does. Sometimes they let us know how appreciative they are. Seriously. So, I do have a proclamation in that the city of Glendale proclaims May 18th to 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, celebrating the engineers, operators, and staff whose daily work keeps our streets, facilities, and essential services running smoothly. This year's theme, as you said, People, Purpose, Presence, acknowledges the essential role of Public Works professionals in building strong, vibrant, and forward-thinking communities. And I will come down and invite any of my colleagues who'd like to join in the presentation to you, Ed.
Let you do it.
There's a big crowd already.
Okay, next item, please.
Next are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Najarian, we have public comments on three of the consent items, item 4B, 4F, and 4G.
Okay. All right. Um, city manager has indicated 4F to be pulled for separate consideration or to be removed from the...
To be removed, Mr. Mayor, from this evening's consent calendar and to return on a future date.
On a future date. Okay. Would someone like to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, let's take roll call.
Council members Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. And the first pulled item?
The first pulled item is 4F.
Well, that's off.
It's off the...
Oh, sorry. My apologies. 4B.
4B. Will you read that into the agenda?
4B is Public Works Regarding Building Maintenance and Repair Services at Various City Facilities. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract 8001439 with ACO Engineered Systems, Inc., for citywide maintenance and repairs of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems to increase the contract amount by $350,000. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract 8002311 with Aztec Elevator Company for citywide maintenance and repairs of elevators to increase the contract amount by $300,000. Three, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract 8001571 with AME Builders, Inc., for citywide maintenance and repairs of roofing systems to increase the contract amount by $100,000.
And do we have a speaker on that?
Yes, we have one speaker, Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Yes, because, hi, because the budget is on everybody's mind. This is $750,000 more for the heating and air, elevator, and roofing. What happened with this company, or with, with these companies, or with these issues that that's $750,000 more? I don't, I don't understand how these things happen in this city. Now, I don't have the supplemental material in the agenda to see, like, this is what happened with the heating, and they have to have more units or something like that, but that's a lot of money to increase the contract. What would happen if you didn't increase it? I mean, well, I mean, no, really, I'm not, I'm not kidding. What would happen? Would the work not get done at all? Would less get done? Would it be, uh, the equipment be less high-quality? I don't know. That's a ton of money. We're talking about the city council here. You're just hemorrhaging money. Now, of course, I don't know what the background is on these items, but I do think that the public needs to know. Come up here and say something. This is a lot of money that, that they're spending, that there are things that the city needs that they're not spending money on. That's what I have to say. And I'm going to come up here every time there's a, there's a budget item and say, you know, why, why? At a certain point, say no.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay. Mr. Brotman, did you have?
I just was going to ask the city manager if we could address that.
Yes, definitely. Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, the reason for these contracts are essentially to address deferred maintenance. We have a backlog of deferred maintenance items that we need to take care of. As the speaker noted, you can always say no, but that would mean this room with air conditioning system, every day on, will suffer. Other facilities within the city that our staff use and the public use our facilities, they will have to suffer because we will not be able to maintain the systems.
Why more expensive?
I don't understand the question, why more expensive?
There wasn't, was there not an increase?
Yeah, there's an increase for each one.
Increase the contract amount by X amount.
So, as the speaker indicated, she didn't have the information, but in the staff report, we do highlight why the increases, as also referenced by the city manager. So, there are some deferred maintenance, but there was also some high-ticket items that subsequently drove this. So, if you go through each of them in terms of the HVAC, there were units we had to replace, which also drove, drove this cost. So, ultimately, it's a increased service, increased demand, and to address the deferred maintenance. But in our staff report, we have highlighted for each of the different services, why this drove each specific item.
But if I might, I think this is, this is ongoing maintenance that we do on our facilities.
Correct.
We just need to extend the contract because we have, we always have things we need to do, but we had completed the contract that the council approved, or we're getting near to completing the, using up the amount of money that the, that the council approved, and now we're adding to that so we can continue to do maintenance. adding to that so we can continue to do maintenance on our buildings. Is that right?
Within the existing term, we are adding additional funds to it, to address those, what you mentioned.
Within the existing, okay, I see. Within the existing term, we're adding additional funds because we have additional deferred maintenance, things that are breaking, things that we need to, we know we need to upgrade.
Correct.
And we're going to be doing that, which is like roofing, HVAC...
Elevators.
Elevators, things like that. Okay.
Okay, is there a motion for 4B?
Before we... A motion, if I may, I think Ms. Brooks brings up a good point. I was trying to figure out when would be the right time to raise it. I raised it in some fashion during the last budget session, but really looking at, as we're going into trying to finalize our budget, really looking at, you know, nice-to-have, need-to-have, must-have, and even if it means deferred maintenance, what that cost difference would be, because obviously, we don't want to defer things that would end up, you know, if they're costing us $2 million now, and then five years from now, it's going to cost us, I don't know, $5 million for us to be able to differentiate, but really also taking into account the current state of affairs as it relates to inflation, our residents' inability to pay utilities, affordability with rent, and all of that. So, I don't know if those are, you know, things that staff can put together as, like, you know, here are some, would be nice-to-have versus must-have as part of our budget conversations, but I think it's an important conversation to have because we, time and again, during council meetings, approve these, but there is a larger picture here of the state of affairs in our city, and not just in our city, in the state, and across the U.S. So...
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Council members Asatriyan...
Yes.
Brotman...
Yes.
Karpetian...
Yes.
Kasakian...
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. And we had pulled one more, had we not?
Yes, 4G.
4G. Will you please read that into the record?
Yes. 4G is Public Works Regarding Fremont Park Renovation Project. One resolution dispensing with competitive bidding incorporating additional project scope and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a contract change order to construction contract number 8002286 with Dorado Design and Construction, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $418,000 and approving an additional 10% contingency of $41,800. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to professional services agreement number 8001517 with Maestro Development, LLC, increasing the contract amount by $155,200 for a total not to exceed amount of $1,010,200. Three, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to PSA number C106224 with David Vault's Design Landscaping Architects, increasing the contract amount by $35,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $458,382.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker?
Yes, Beth Brooks is the speaker. You have three minutes.
If I could come up there and kiss you, Ellen, I would. I would come up there and kiss you. This is exactly it. Nice-to-have versus you must-have. This is, people suffering from, you made it sound like people are going to die because they're not going to have air conditioning. Come on. This is a park. I know the renovation is important. It's going to be incredible, but again, what happens if you don't increase this amount? Really, what happens if you don't? Again, I don't know what the background is, but it's true. You just, you just green-light everything. Every time, it's like, oh, we need some more money, so let's green... This is $600,000. Okay? That's a lot of money. That's more than a half a million. That's a lot of money for the park. So, what happens if you don't green-light this money? Is it real suffering that's taking place? Is there real, you'll get less shrubbery? I mean, I don't, I don't know. Again, I think you really need to, with a fine-tooth comb, go through, is this really necessary? Because the city has to tighten its belt. You really need to look at how you're spending money. Are you spending it efficiently? Are you, with inflation, is it better to spend it now versus it's going to be worse in two years? I understand that, but you cannot just green-light everything just because somebody says, oh, you know, we need another $420,000. That's a lot of money. The whole thing is $600,000. That's, my point is always going to be the same. Nice-to-have versus need-to-have, and what are the repercussions if you don't do it? How terrible it is. You're not going to die without the, you know, really, I mean, it made it sound like people are going to melt in here because, you know, there'd be no air conditioning. Come on. Thank you.
Mr. Golanian, I think the bigger question is, to what extent do we scrutinize these expenses and make sure that they're absolutely necessary as opposed to frivolous or aspirational for putting before the council and approving?
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. I would state that nothing is being spent frivolously. We do consult, we do have briefings with council members, we go through every single, even consent items. Council asks very pointed questions, valid questions, the reasons why we're asking for what we're asking for before we come to the public session. As far as this particular project's concerned, is a shade structure over the playground a necessity or a nice-to-have? I would say it's a necessity. Is a 20-foot-high fence around the soccer field a necessity or a nice-to-have? It's a safety concern. If the soccer balls jump the short fence and we have streets surrounding the park, an accident happens, that's a liability. These two items were not as part of the original scope of the work. It was brought up by council members, actually, and their valid request, and we added additional scope that requires an additional payment to the contractor, extends the term of the contract, the duration of the construction, hence the need to have the project management consulting firm onboard for that extended period, as well as the construction management company.
Okay.
Can I say, just one small thing. I think what, Ms. Brooks, you don't necessarily see, and I understand why you don't see it, why the public doesn't see it, are the many, 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 many items that come to Mr. Golanian that don't get approved. What you're seeing is only the ones that make it through a very rigorous filter and come to us. We also do get an opportunity to get briefed on these, and if we have objections, city manager will know. Maybe the item gets pulled, maybe staff does something different with it. So, I think sometimes there's a misperception that this is everything we do. No, this is only the stuff that filters up to the very last stage of getting approved, and it's important to understand that for everybody.
And I will simply, I will simply add that if someone is going to be held responsible for cost increases because of shade structures in playgrounds, I'll be the first to stand up. I have spoken about that numerous times, that given extreme heat events that we're having, when parents go to playgrounds, and it was something I didn't notice until I was going to a playground regularly with my child, Glendale is far behind other cities around Los Angeles County and in warm-weather places like Nevada and Arizona where playgrounds have shade structures. Shade helps kids play outside safely, and I think it's important that when we renovate all our parks, that all playgrounds have shade structures. So, if that's what's causing the costing, now, you know, there's a whole laundry list. I don't want people to have the takeaway from my statement being that a shade structure costs $400,000-plus dollars, but the number of things, as was mentioned, in totality necessitate for us to have these increases within reason to open up this park. One of our largest parks in what arguably one can say is in the southern part of the city, even though it's on the northern side of the freeway demarcation line, and it's a very popular park. Before, it was closed for renovation, and I'm sure it will be once it's open, then people see what a great job staff has done. Thank you.
Would someone like a make-up motion?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Asatriyan... Brotman...
Yes.
Karpetian...
Yes.
Kasakian...
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Let's move to the next item.
Next are city council and staff comments.
I will start from Mr. Brotman's side.
Yes, I have one item. It's a sad one, and I would like to be adjourning this meeting in the memory of Yurik Kazalian. I'll read a short statement. I'd like to take a moment to honor an important, sorry, I'm going to get closer here. I would like to take a moment to honor an important member of the Glendale community, Yurik Kazalian, who peacefully passed away on Monday, May 12th, at the age of 62. Yurik was one of seven kids born in Tehran to a close, loving Armenian family. He met his wife and moved to the United States in 1991 to pursue the American dream. He and his wife raised two kids, instilling in them the importance of working hard and always caring for those around you. In 2004, he opened Urartu Coffee, a beloved coffee shop in the heart of Glendale. Yurik had such a warm presence and loved to be connected with his community. Those who frequented Urartu were not just loyal customers, but were part of his broader family. He will be greatly missed. Let us honor this incredible person by continuing his values, to care for our community, and to find joy in every single day. Thank you. And you can see his picture. I think we all knew him and all loved him. Very sweet man. He, there will be a service on May 22nd, 6:00 PM, St. Leon Armenian Cathedral. I will be there, and he really will be missed.
Thank you.
A shock to a lot of people, right?
I just want to thank Mayor, I want to thank Councilmember Brotman, Mayor, and say that I share in the pain and loss of the Kazalian family. Yeah, I've spent countless hours at Urartu, as I know many of us have, very popular coffee shop on Artsakh, and gone too soon. He really had many more years to live, so condolences, and may he rest in peace.
Councilmember Asatriyan.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I was thinking about actually inviting his family to join us at the council meeting when, after the service for us to do this, but I think all of us were so impacted when we heard. I, not only just for Urartu, but Urartu for me was also my office outside the office. It's, I think, where a lot of community organizations and community groups meet, and Yurik really provided that warmth to the greater community. There were so many organizations that, when they found out about his passing, were remembering all the times that he supported them, Urartu supported, and so it's a great loss for our city. I'll also be there at the service, deepest condolences to the family, and really to our city, a great loss.
I have no other comment.
Mr... I'm going to go, oh, on this regard, yes.
On Yurik, yeah. I just wanted to express my deepest condolences to Yurik, his family, and loved ones and friends. We have known him for a long, long time. I also knew his brother Norik, who was a good bass guitar player, who owned the coffee shop on Glendale Avenue, Coffee Express, and it's really sad, gone too soon. It's very sad.
Thank you.
I just have one item, and I wasn't sure if this required a council decision or whatnot, but for some months now, I have been in conversation with the founder of the Safe You app, which is a domestic violence app. I had noted in a previous meeting that I was trying to figure out which organizations and bodies would be interested. There is a really unique opportunity here, because as we were looking for funding, there is a $500,000 to a $1 million grant from the Office of Domestic Violence Against Women that's become available. I think as we're, I was trying to figure out who was going to bring in funding and so forth before I even brought this issue up, but I would love for us to look at the grant, see if we can apply for it before the deadline, and the deadline's approaching. I just wouldn't want to lose that opportunity as I'm trying to figure out. I know that the Armenian Relief Society is very interested in partnering, and they also said that they would be looking to come in with funding. The YWCA is also committed to this and wants to see this. I was looking at having conversations with other cities as well, but I don't want to miss out on this opportunity because there is a deadline on the grant. I'm not sure if it's the city clerk's office. I think part of that was conversations with the police department. I know the police department has its own grant writers, if it's possible for us to do it through that, for them to work on it and submit, just looking to see if there needs to be a council direction on this, or if staff can, I don't know if, you know, the commission has discussed. I know that Safe You came to the commission and gave a presentation, but I think beyond that, there hasn't really been a decision made. I just, there's an opportunity in front of us, and it's time-sensitive. So, Mr. Golanian, you would require for us, or the commission can, should the commission, can the council needs to give direction? How would you like to do this?
Thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Asatriyan. Since this action is going to require coordination with the police department, with our IT folks, IT department, and it's going to need some staff time, grant writing, whatever we need to do, I'd like a direction from council. We can put it on the new business agenda for the next time we meet, and you can go into details, and as well as the opportunity, potential of commission on staffs of women applying directly. But since this is a private entity, and we don't have any formal arrangements with them, it would require council direction.
Okay, so, they had provided a two-tiered proposal, which I have forward to you and the mayor, but again, I had even publicly said, I don't, I was just trying to figure out what other parties could come in as part of a partnership, because I would love for this to be something where we may be the leading city that does this, but, you know, it's ultimately our nonprofits that are engaging in this. So, then I guess for new business next weekend, I'm happy to provide the...
It will be on June 3rd agenda.
And I believe the... The grant deadline is, do you want to take somebody else in and I'll inform you?
Okay, I'll let you work on those dates. Mr. Kasakian?
Thank you. The only thing I will say is I had the privilege of attending two wonderful events this weekend. The first was one that was very moving. It was held at the Alex Theater. It was the Artsakh National Dance Ensemble that was performing with, at the invitation of the Armenia Fund. The city had been a cosponsor of that. This was the National Dance Ensemble of Artsakh, which unfortunately underwent ethnic cleansing by the government of Azerbaijan. These are folks now who are continuing their art and their craft, traditional dances from the region, as well as contemporary dance to a packed house. They performed with their heads held high, giving everyone in the diaspora and everyone who's been following what's been happening their hope and inspiration. And the second event was the Armenian Youth Association of California, also known to some as a center for Iraqi Armenians. Their Gomitas Choir, under the leadership of conductor Mikhail Avadisyan, gave a wonderful performance. They do this every year, and I wanted to thank them for the invitation. And there were many events, but those were the only two I was able to make it to, and I want to thank both and say that they were wonderful performances. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karpetian?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to wish my wife a happy 31st anniversary. Yes, it is our anniversary tonight, and...
it is our anniversary tonight, and I'm spending it with you fine people. So, we've known each other for over 36, 7 years. I'm blessed to have her in my life. I always say that she's the best thing that ever happened to me. We have attended a conference this, this weekend, past weekend, along with the mayor, Najarian, and city manager, Galanian, California Contract Cities Association, and there were so many different sessions in there, and the hottest topic was public safety, and also the talk within the supervisors, county supervisors, that they are thinking about closing the, the main LA jail, and we have about 4,000, what's the right word for it, prison inmates in there. And we don't know what the plan would be. So that's something for, you know, near horizon for us to look into, and I think our police chief is here, and he's nodding his head, and I think we need to start looking into what's going on and what's going to happen if that happens. I also watched the, the meeting that Metro was here presenting, the BRT project, the Bus Rapid Trans.
Transit.
Transit, Fast Rapid Transit. And they mentioned that they had several community meetings and engagement and outreach. And I spoke to a few of the smaller homeowners' groups, or not smaller, but their, the homeowners' associations. None of our invited to any of these meetings, none of our approached or reached out to. I think we need to look into it, and if this project is something that it's a must, it's coming without, you know, having a vote or what have you. I think we need to really make sure that the community is aware as to what's coming. I know they, they, they have, sometimes they have some, some booths in, in farmers' markets, or cruise night, or what have you. But when I'm at cruise nights, I'm, I'm not, I'm looking at the cars. I'm not going to really dive deep and engage into a very large project that goes from North Hollywood all the way down to South Pasadena. By the way, it started with, if I'm, if I'm, if I remember it correctly, it was started at $230 million. Now I think it's over $300 million. But nonetheless, I think we need to make sure that community is aware, well aware about this project, and where is it going to go, and what's gonna happen to the streets, and the terms of it, basically. The last thing I'll, I have, I'd like to ask again, is, or mention again, is La Crasena Avenue project is well on its way. I think there is still an opportunity to have maybe a section of it, to have a demonstration project when the, the portion of the project is done, the asphalt is done. So we will see what, what the results are going to be like. We did with, with Bram Boulevard, it was a demonstration project. I'm, I'm just asking my colleagues again to, we still have a little time, my colleagues that were in a majority at that time, to, to really think about it and see if we can offer a portion of this to be demonstration project before we install the entire project, and then later it will be a little bit more difficult to, to make changes, and it's going to cost a lot more. With that, I believe that's all I have. That's all I have for, at this time. Thank you.
Yes.
Deadline.
Councilmember Asadriyan.
The deadline's June 16. It looks like it, there's two parts to it. One's June 16, and one June's 18. I mean, I've written many grants before. It, that's sufficient time, unless there's like staffing issues or whatnot, but for us to be able to get it done. So if we can just put it on the next agenda, and then I'll, I'll circulate the item. Thank you.
Just briefly, I, as Councilmember Garpetian stated, I did attend the Contract Cities Association Municipal Conference, and it was very interesting where we saw several of the LA County Supervisors strongly espouse a care-first for all types of crime and incarceration last. We also had a presentation by the DA, Nathan Hockman, who perhaps was the other way around for that. He was very much law and order and intent on bringing to trial and bringing charges against many offenses which were not pursued by the former DA Gascon. So, as you know, that was a vote by the members of the county, the residents of the county, and he is definitely following through on his efforts and his campaign promises. I also would like to ask that we close council, and I, if, if staff would let me know, I, I think it's appropriate that we only adjourn in the memory of one individual. This, this was on, at least on my agenda. I, I understood there was some talk about putting Yurik's closer at the next meeting, but regardless, as we, when we conclude tonight's meeting, I'd like to honor, honor the memory of Ok Jun Lee. And do we have a, a photo of her? Affectionately known as Grandma Lee, a courageous survivor of wartime atrocities and a tireless advocate for justice. At the age of 14, she was forced to endure unimaginable suffering during World War II. Yet she transformed her pain into purpose, dedicating her life to ensuring that the voices of other women like her, comfort women, were heard and their stories remembered. Grandma Lee visited Glendale multiple times, standing beside our peace monument in Central Park, a symbol of resilience and remembrance. Do we have another picture of that, too? Perhaps. She reminded us that while the war ended decades ago, the fight for dignity and acknowledgement continues. May her legacy inspire us to uphold justice and compassion in all that we do. In memory of Grandma Lee, we will also adjourn tonight's council meeting. And that is all that I have. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I do have more. As you know, this upcoming weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and Monday, May 26th in particular, is Memorial Day. And I think we have a flyer for this, too? So what that means is there are celebrations and commemorations throughout the city and the area. It starts at Montrose at the Vietnam War Memorial. I believe that's at 8:00 AM. It's a, it's a smaller gathering, but solemn nonetheless. Then, here at Glendale City Hall, in front of our Veterans Memorial, at 9:30, we will also have a commemoration with a keynote speaker, whose name escapes me, but we will have a keynote speaker, and a laying of the wreaths. And then after that, I believe it's at 11 o'clock at Forest Lawn in Glendale, there will also be a ceremony. So, in memory of all those who gave their lives for this country, let's all spend a few moments to remember their sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice, on Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, USA. Thank you. Mr. Galanian, any staff comments?
No, sir.
Very good. Let's move on to the next part of the agenda.
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communication subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have three speaker cards currently. Our first speaker is Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, council and staff. Tony Passarella. Mr. Bhaji. Dateline, San Diego, California, 2024. E-bike battery fires demand sweeping safety. The San Diego Fire Rescue Department reported at least 32 e-bike battery fires since March 2024, in addition to 104 in 2023. Huntington Beach. Dateline, Huntington Beach, 2023. An e-bike had been charging for days in the first-floor apartment of a family of three in Huntington Beach when it exploded late one night this month. Flames spread rapidly and blocked the front door, forcing them to escape out the window. Dateline, San Diego, California, April 2025. A hidden danger could be sitting in your garage tucked in your e-bike or charging your living room. Lithium ion batteries, Mr. Brotman, commonly forced, found in everything from smartphones to scooters to electric vehicles, are behind a growing number of fires in San Diego County. According to records obtained by CBS8, at least 83 fires over the past year have been linked to the rechargeable batteries. Dateline, Irvine, California, 2025. There have been incidents involving lithium batteries catching fire, including one where an e-bike battery ignited while being driven. These fires can be dangerous and difficult to extinguish. No more pictures, Suzy? Emitting toxic gases, burning very hot. The Irvine Police Department has issued warnings and safety tips about the lithium-ion batteries, Mr. Brotman. Dateline, Fordham Heights, Bronx, oh my gosh. 2023, e-bike battery fire causes, New York City Fire destroys homes, businesses, officials. There's nothing left, and it's all because of one single bike. The fire commissioner said seven people were injured. I'll, I'll continue. I got 45 seconds. I got a whole bunch of these, by the way. Dateline, Midwood, Brooklyn, 2024. At least four people were hurt in a fire. A man was rushed to the hospital with life-threatening injuries. The 30-year-old man is being treated for severe burns in Staten Island University North Hospital. The other people being treated for injuries, all expected to survive. Dateline, Queens, 2023. A fast-moving fire started by a lithium e-bike battery, killed a seven-year-old and teenager in Queens in an apartment building. Five children and one adult were in the second-story apartment when the fire broke out around 2:00 PM in the building. Dateline, Holyoke, Massachusetts, and we're continuing. E-bike battery pack explodes in Holyoke, sparking a fire. One person was injured, and several others were displaced. An electric bicycle battery pack exploded. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have more, but you're not gonna let me continue, right?
I think we got your point.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for that. Next speaker, please.
Next is Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you for bringing up Memorial Day ceremonies, Mayor Najarian. I am a Vietnam veteran. So on Monday, the 26th, I think, I'm not sure the exact date.
Yes.
The 26th, okay. There will be a, up in Montrose, the traditional Memorial Day services there for Vietnam veterans like myself. Later, there will be one, and I'll be there. And later, in the after, in the morning at 9:30 at Glendale City Hall, and I'll try and be here also. It's a special day for very many people. You know, you council people, you argue back and forth, et cetera, but you have to stop and say to yourself, why am I here? How is this possible? How is this possible? The thousands of people through the years have died for this democracy, this republic. You all take it for granted. When you cut off speakers, speaking, you don't show their faces. How democratic is that? People died to see my face and your face. I don't wanna see the back of my head for the public. This is disgusting. This is Memorial Day. Honor the people who died. Okay, number two. I'm glad we had a rabbi here this, this, this evening. A man of the cloth, and he didn't talk politics for a change. It was refreshing, wasn't it? It was, no politics was discussed. That was very, very refreshing. Last item, Mr. Vartan Garpetian brought up, La Crasena Avenue. Let's do a test case on that before we spend millions of dollars on that project like we did on North Brand. Seventy-six percent of the community was against the bike lanes on North Brand. Where is that survey, Mr. Brotman, that you promised that you're gonna have the people take? I haven't, nobody sent me a survey to fill out. Did I want bike lanes in the city of Glendale? Mr. Brotman, where is that? You, you, you agreed with me that evening. Don't you recall? Yeah, yes, Mr. Mohill? Where is that?
We'll answer you when you're done.
Okay, good. Okay? Because a lot of people in this community do not want bike lanes. They want, they don't want the traffic lane to be removed for bike lanes. We are a mobile society. If you want to have bike lanes, go to New York City. That's where they have bikes. Chinatown had bikes, and guess what they did? They got rid of them. Many cities who went the route of bike lanes, guess what? They got rid of them all. Thank you. Did you wanna address the issue, Mr. Galani, on the survey, please?
Hey, we give the orders around here. Mr. Galani, would you please give the information on that survey?
Yes, sir.
And don't forget to salute.
If you were, Mr. Mohill. Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council, the, um, about the term, the satisfaction, community satisfaction survey was, has been completed. The report has been drafted. The consultant who conducted the survey will make a presentation to the council on June 3rd. The survey did include questions related to implementation of bike facilities in the city, and, and we have the results of that survey. Again, they'll be presented on June 3rd.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, we have one more speaker, Suren Khodavardi. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Suren Khodavardi, and I'm happy, second time I am coming. I was very disagree with this guy, which he said bicycle, they have to, this is not my issue, but when I heard, there is no traffic which you enjoy. I am bicycling almost 30 years in Glendale. An elite, she knows, last week we were physical in Brand Park, and I went there by bicycle. And I am 70 years, but I feel like I am 20 years. I can challenge with the people, young. The person which he said, there is no bicycling Glendale, wrong, laziness. And another thing, I'm from Iran. Forty-five years ago, when I came, the, I don't want to speak politics. The whole world is based on energy, oil, gas, and we become homeless. When I came here to this country for education, I supposed to go back to my country to serve. My son, right now, he's a doctor. He spent half a million dollar in order to be a doctor. That meaning this country, you have to spend money to be somebody, whatever you wanted to be. So, sorry about to hear, but my issue is, when I came here, Larizarian, she was the mayor, he was the mayor. And I remember one day I had a meeting with him. He said, we made hotel, red, red line hotel, which now is Hilton Hotel, they changed. We trying to make more hotel, bring tourist people here. Same thing which, right now, we are doing Armenian genocide in Colorado. That's good for Glendale. Lots of tourists that will come here, and they make lots of people money by doing that. Anyway, my issue, Saturday, I was in XILE, they call it Zeal Hotel in Glendale and Colorado. When we were there, they said, tonight, the rate is $442, because any hotel we, it was full. So, I was with one lady, which I'm. So I was with one lady which I'm helping, she's disabled, she's in a wheelchair, and she has a stroke, and so many problem. And I brought her medication in here, something happened today. Anyway, they charged me four hundred, and when I went to the room, no iron, no hairdryer, no, what else? Three, four things which it didn't exist that hotel. Plus, all day long that night, toilet running without fixing. God knows how long that toilet, and I couldn't sleep. I couldn't sleep that. And next day I report, we paid $442 and no service, no service. So I know lots of money hotel they give to the city. I know that.
Thank you, Mr. Khodavarti.
So please, please take care of this situation and talk to some of this hotel which they're charging people without any service. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking today.
Thank you very much.
Any other?
That is all.
That is all. Okay. We will close this portion of oral communications, and we will move on to the next item. But I think what we're going to do, oh, we can do 7A. Let's do 7A.
Seven is adoption of ordinances. 7A, City Attorney regarding adoption of rules pertaining to council meeting procedures and decorum. One ordinance amending Glendale Municipal Code 1995, Section 2.04.080, 2.04.090, 2.04.120, and 2.04.140, and deleting Section 2.04.150, introduced by Brotman on 5/13/2025. And two, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, California adopting rules of order, procedure, and decorum for the conduct of the city council meetings.
Mr. Galanian.
I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, following last week's discussion, the City Council introduced the ordinance to amend the municipal code to incorporate the rules of procedure that are the subject of the resolution that is A2. The resolution was revised to incorporate language regarding the seating of time. There was, appeared to be consensus on all the other items. I would note, however, there was some discussion subsequent to that about the second period of oral communications, whether that would be three minutes or five minutes. It's currently drafted as it was introduced with the three minutes. So other than that, those items are ready to be adopted. We would ask that they be moved and seconded and voted on independently of one another because 7A1 involves an ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a question?
So I don't have the actual language of the ordinance in my packet.
I think it's there. They may have put it in a different location because it's the ordinance.
No. It's just the report.
It's just the report.
I can't speak to, I apologize, I can't speak to why it's not in the packet, hard copy of the packet. I don't know, maybe the clerk's office can speak to it. It certainly, it was on the website. The ordinance, I can walk through a little bit about what the ordinance itself is just, again, removing some of the references to rules of procedure and just referencing the resolution that's going to have one complete set of rules, and then authorizing the presiding officer and the Sergeant of Arms, who's the chief of police, to enforce those rules. And I think that those are the extent of the change, the ordinance itself.
What remains open, I'm sorry, is the three-minute or five-minute in the last communication?
That was, that was the only thing where there was still some divergence on the council.
Council member, I said three.
Mayor, if I may ask for this to be moved for us to actually look at the language of the ordinance, I don't feel comfortable voting on something I haven't, I recognize that.
Yeah.
Is there an urgency? Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
What do my colleagues think about putting this over?
I'm agreeable with that.
Put it over? Okay.
Thank you.
So we will do that on motion or on act of the chair?
I think it can just be, unless there's objection, we can move it to the subsequent.
Okay, with no objection, let's put this on the.
June 3rd.
Yeah, I know, you have the copy of the.
We'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
Speaker? We will hear the speaker.
We do have two speakers on this.
We will hear them.
The first speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mohill can come to the front. Mr. Mohill, there's plenty of seats up front if you want to come and.
Well. Can I make a quick suggestion?
No, don't get too comfortable up here, Mr. Mohill. I want you to know. No, no suggestion yet. You'll have a chance to address us during the three-minute period, and Ms. Brooks has the floor.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to see if you could include Zoom meetings as a method of watching or participating in the meetings that it would be in the ordinance, if it needs to be in an ordinance. Because I think that would really be very helpful for people who, again, if they're watching on TV, that they don't want to just have their TV set to the city council meeting for four hours or two hours. And this way, if you're in a Zoom meeting, as I've actually offered before, that you could have representatives in the meeting, I would do it, and then people could just contact me and say, you know, I want to speak now. And I would let them know, you know, what, you could call now to talk about this agenda item, and then they could be able to call in as a means of communication and watching it. So you could sort of be a liaison between the public and the city council and allow people to watch that way. I think people would be more inclined to see what's going on in the city council if you had Zoom meetings. You would at least add more people to see what's going on in the city. I think that that would be helpful, and I don't know if that needs to be in the ordinance or not, but I think that would really be helpful. I know it would be helpful to get public comments, that I know, that I believe, because people could sort of come in and out, they could check in on text. Because sometimes when you call in, because there's a lag, you don't always get to speak on the agenda because maybe it's been concluded or oral communications is over. This way, you know, somebody can text you and say, yeah, they just finished this, you can call in. That's just my two cents about the ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Galanian, can you tell our viewers the different ways they can tune in and observe the city council?
We are streaming on YouTube. That's available, and it's archived. We have a phone number that's bottom of the screen that they could call in, and obviously in-person attendance. During the COVID pandemic, we tried the Zoom council meetings, as you know, and it's extremely challenging for IT department to manage those. And we need folks here, we need folks in IT department and the constant monitoring and people not being able to get on, and it's extremely challenged. And I don't know of any city in the region that continued staying on council Zoom meetings.
If you go to our agenda page and you click on the city council meeting, the video is also available, which I think is.
And it's archived and available.
Or maybe it's part of YouTube, but that's, you can either go to YouTube and do Glendale City Council, or you can go to our agenda page and it'll show you.
There's an icon, yes.
Live proceedings. Mr. Kasakian.
So I understand some of the points that Ms. Brooks brings up. They're, I think, important points in general. I believe what she's asking for is ways for us to expand participation, which I support wholly, though the technicalities of it we may disagree on. I think Zoom is just one of many streaming platforms when, as was mentioned during COVID, we were trying to find ways where we could have these remote meetings. One of the challenges, and it may have changed because technology changes and as issues come up, companies try to address them, there was a security concern. And if you recall, during COVID, there were a number of meetings where pranksters and people trying to be goofballs were getting into the meetings, and there was all sorts of malarkey. We'll just leave it at that. However, I think that there are other cities that do use a participation interactive method, Granicus, which is one of the companies I think we contracted out with. I know when I was city clerk, we used them to initially, we were the first to have streaming meetings in our region, online meetings. They have a platform through which people can participate or express opinions on various issues as they come up. I would wholeheartedly support that if it can be implemented. And secondly, I think that in terms of how people are able to participate and how we stream our meetings, I have seen cities that use Facebook. It's, they stream the meetings. I think Torrance may be one of those cities, maybe worthwhile to look at. They may disable the commenting feature, I'm not sure, but I know Facebook has it, and it goes to the point of meeting people where they're at. You know, different people access meetings differently. I'm not someone who uses TikTok. Certainly, there's a lot of people, young people nowadays who use TikTok, and I think, you know, the social media platforms are being used to get information out there. Whatever we can do to get information out to people and have them engage, I think is a net positive. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Three minutes, did you want to change the clock, please?
Your wish is our command.
Of course.
Give him a fresh three. Give him a fresh three.
Okay. What got my ear thinking is this thing called oral communication changing the last from five minutes to three minutes at the end, okay? Does anybody remember why we have a three-minute oral communication, other than community announcements? It was because of former Mayor Paul DuVine. There was Margaret Hammond, we called her the hat lady, and she came here all the time. But because she was in her late eighties, she couldn't make it at night. So Paula said, hey, you know what? Going forward, we're going to have the three, we'll have a three-minute portion at the beginning of council of oral communication. And if people want to elaborate at the end of council business, they can talk for five minutes, which is great. You know, there's sometimes, some speakers have a lot to say. God bless them all. I may not agree with them, but you know, that's their right. To change the five-minute portion to three minutes, how undemocratic that is. You want, you want participation, you're trying to reduce it. The status quo was great. Three-minute oral communication with community announcements? Wonderful. People want to come up early enough to get the card? Great. And those who want to have more to talk about, they can, they can talk at 10 o'clock at night for five minutes. Sometimes our meetings are there, even 12 o'clock at night. Let's not change the system. It's not broken. Why fix it? People like it. I don't know who among you think it's better to cut off people's voices. It's like the camera behind my, behind my head again. Don't you want to see my pretty face? Let me turn my face around to the camera. Hi, folks, and the audience, my name is Mike Mohill. This is how rude you are. You want to cut off the voices of the public. You work for us. We don't work for you. Remember that when you go ahead and take, make actions. Think twice. It's not all about you. Ask yourself, the people who voted for you, do they, will they still vote for you again a second time? Let's leave oral communication the way it is. Three minutes and a five minutes. Again, the five-minute portion is for those windy people who have a lot to say, and they can get all done in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay, so this action without objection is continued to our next meeting, so we can review the details, ordinance. Next are the action items, and Madam Clerk, I believe we want to take the item at 8D first, and then for all you fire department folks, we're going to take your high-capacity lifting equipment after the Vision Zero plan, so you can get out of here at a decent time.
Action item D is.
8, I'm sorry, 8D.
8D is Community Development Regarding Project Update Vision Zero Action Plan. One motion to note and file report. We do have one public speaker on this item.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council, I'm simply going to invite Bradley Calvert, our Community Development Director, who will introduce the item as well as the consultant.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor and council members. Is our consultant available on there as well? Ready to go? I just want to give a quick introduction. It was maybe a year and some change ago, the city council had instructed CDD to start working on Vision Zero Plan. The idea behind a Vision Zero Plan is to essentially make sure that the engineering, the education, and the enforcement components of transportation are all speaking together and are working towards essentially eliminating serious injuries and fatalities on our roads across all modes of transportation. This is not about any specific mode, this is not about targeting one mode, this is about finding where our high collision corridors are, our high number of incidents, and coming up with a plan and a strategy on how we're going to essentially resolve that, attack that. One of the things we've done is we've taken a pretty methodical and deliberate approach as part of this, recognizing that we've seen other cities where Vision Zero has not worked quite as well. Los Angeles is one of them. And what you're going to see tonight essentially is really a report out of data and information to find out where our high incident rates are, what are the causes of those high incident rates. We're not looking for specific direction this evening. Essentially, this is a report out of that data, that information, that will influence our next steps as we move forward in this plan, which includes additional public engagement, and then also working with the many other plans and programs that we have running concurrently now. As you're aware, we're doing our local road safety plan, we still have our bicycle transportation plan that's out there, our existing circulate, or our existing pedestrian plan, and we're updating our circulation element, which will become our mobility element. And this Vision Zero document really is intended to bring all of those together and figure out how we resolve those incidents. With that being said, what I'd like to introduce Sam Frommer. He is part of our consultant team, Burrow Hapald, who is working on this, and he is going to go through the presentation for you this evening before any questions and comments.
And where's he located?
He's personally located in New York City. The firm itself does have an office here in Los Angeles, and they do have field reps who have been working with us on the ground in Los Angeles.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not, damn, it's an inside joke, nothing personal.
I believe he was present for the first joke.
Good evening, Councilmember Najarian. You hear me okay?
No, our previous. Welcome to Glendale City Council.
You all can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear myself? Okay, okay, great. Okay, good evening, council members. Is that presentation up? Because I can't see it.
Yes, give me one second. It's up.
Gorgeous. Yes, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Frommer, I'm the project manager for the Glendale Vision Zero Plan, working along with Tool Design and Catherine Padilla Associates. And as mentioned, we're all have offices located in Southern California. Next slide, please. Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries or increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. This is about identifying where your high crash areas are and then what can be done about it. So as a first step, we looked at existing crash data, we looked at ten years of data, and we distinguished between two different types of crashes. We have crashes that cause injuries, so those are injury crashes, those are, that's the blue line, and then we have KSI crashes also, which stands for killed or severely injured. These are your most severe crashes. And so we look at both of these, but we're most concerned about KSI crashes. So as you can see, crashes leading up into the pandemic were declining, and then during the pandemic, really dropped as a result likely of less driving and less people out on the street. And then we can start to see that that's starting to creep up in 2021. We have provisional data from the state for '22 and '23, but that's not final, and when this analysis was conducted. We have provisional data from the state for 22 and 23, but that's not final. And when this analysis was conducted, that that data was still provisional, but we do have, I'll get into in a moment, some local GPD data that indicates some of that trends. Next slide, please. So while the majority of crashes, as you would suspect, involve vehicles between two vehicles or more, the crashes that cause the most harm to people are the ones that involve pedestrians. So while pedestrians are involved in only 17% of crashes, they make up 45%. Pedestrians make up 45% of killed or severely injured people in crashes, right? So that's that's disproportionate by almost a factor of three. Similarly, motorcycles are involved in only 5% of crashes, but make up 18% of KSI crashes. That's a nearly four-fold difference. And then we have some indications, you know, that these types of crashes are caused when people violate or violate the pedestrian right of way. Unsafe speeds are also a contributing factor to a lot of these crashes. And then ignoring traffic signals and signs. That's things like running a stop sign, not yielding at a yield. Next slide, please. And then in terms of locations, we we've been using throughout this project and the bike plan, the Healthy Place, the California Healthy Places Index, which is a composite score of a lot of different indicators of environmental and socioeconomic burdens. And more crashes took place in the areas with a higher Healthy Place Index score. Those crashes also tended to be on your major arterials and minor arterials. That's, you know, the the roads that you would suspect. Things like Brand, Colorado, Central, also near freeway entrances and exits. So a lot of this is sort of intuitive, right? What we're seeing so far is that people walking are more vulnerable than people who are driving, and that the roads with higher volumes, generally higher speeds, and near freeways are also some of the higher crash areas. Next slide, please. And so how does Glendale compare to the rest of the state? So the State Office of Traffic Safety compiles these statistics. And when we look at our most vulnerable populations, like people over the age of 65, Glendale consistently ranks in the top five of 60 similar cities in the state for worst outcomes for people over the age of 65. This this is from OTS, but this was also highlighted in our own analysis of the data. Similarly, Glendale consistently ranks in the as one of the worst cities for pedestrian crashes for similar types of cities across the state, generally ranking in the top 15, and then as recently as 2021, ranking in the top five. Next slide, please. Then, as I was mentioning earlier, we take we our data is on the statewide database. That data comes from GPD and then is, you know, collated and cleaned. So we also looked at more recent GPD data. So we can see that in 2023, there were 31 KSI crashes. This is a significant increase over 2020 and returned to a peak of 2014 levels. So we we saw the 2021 increase post-pandemic, and so we were starting to see that 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 trend continues into 23. Overall, crashes are up, pedestrian crashes are up, and bike injury clashes crashes are up as well. Next slide, please. So what do we do with this data and what can what can we learn from it and how can we address this? So what what we did was basically create a crash density map by mode. So if you are so that that's the victim of the crash, the person that was injured or severely injured or killed, right? So we looked at four modes, people driving, people on motorcycles, people walking, and people biking. And so you create a crash density map by each of those modes. And then those crashes happen all over the city, but we really want to, you know, we know that we have limited resources. We have limited time. We want to know where can we have the greatest impact? So we look at where there's the highest density. So we we look at like the we create a density map of of the highest concentration by mode, and then when we combine those four together, we get what we call a high injury network. So that's the final map on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. And so the high injury network represents 13% of your streets, right? That's that's one eighth. It's not a large amount, but within those roads, within one-eighth of all roads in this in the city of Glendale, 71% of your crashes occur, and 71 78% of your killed or severely injured crashes have taken place there, right? So we know that if we're able to address crashes in these areas on these 13% of streets, we would significantly reduce the injury and severe injury crashes within Glendale and make the streets of Glendale a lot safer. So that's the idea behind developing this high injury network. So next slide, please. So but we want to know specifically where can we put our 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 efforts, right? So while there are crashes that happen everywhere and there's the high injury network is large, we we need to start somewhere. So again, this is a question of resources. So as part of the Vision Zero Action Plan, we are identifying a handful of locations to create counter to develop countermeasures for. So we can't do this citywide. We can't do it even across the entire high injury network. This is really meant to be demonstrative and supplemental to the local safety road plan and the other work, you know, in the pedestrian plan and circulation plan. So the this we're currently doing this work, so this is a bit of a sneak preview or, you know, a halfway point. So we'll be developing countermeasures for nine locations. We're looking at low cost and also long-term capital improvements. Again, emphasizing that this is just the beginning, and you can, of course, this is not restricted. This doesn't mean you have to implement these in these locations in this order. This is where we're focusing our energies as part of this plan, but the the usefulness of this plan is that you are we have identified where the high injury network is and where the most crashes are, and so you could address, you know, anywhere along those that network or beyond it. And so to identify our locations for these countermeasures, we looked at number of KSI crashes, the Healthy Places Index score, the total number of injury crashes, the presence on the high injury network, and the number of vulnerable road users, road users, people biking and walking. Next slide, please. And so there we've developed a point system for each of those criteria. You can see in the second column, the number of points that each criteria gets. KSI crashes can get up to 10 points because that is the most severe type of crash, and that is where we're putting our emphasis. And then you can see down. A lot of these crashes are a lot of these factors overlap and we emphasize a lot of the same areas. So you sum the score for each segment and also each intersection. And then we are excluding areas that we know are already being addressed by incoming or existing capital projects like the Metro BRT project. So while we know that, for example, there are sections of Glen Oaks that are dangerous and are and high crash, we also know that that be addressed and with the Metro BRT project, so we want to focus our energies elsewhere. Next slide, please. So here's a map of the nine selected sites that we are currently developing countermeasures for. You'll note that almost all of them are in downtown or Southern Glendale with one in West Glendale that reflects the broader crash trends of where these types of incidents happen, where also, you know, you have your highest volumes, your highest concentration of destinations. There's a lot going on in these areas, right? So intuitively, it makes sense that the these high crash areas are in in South Glendale and West Glendale. And that that's also intuitively, you know, as a gut check, this is where we're we're developing these countermeasures for. Next slide, please. We've also been doing outreach. We've been going to pop-up event. We've been popping up at existing events. We've been holding our own events. We recently held five walk audits in March. Next slide, please. Which were really great, a super high-touch, super participatory event. We had a ton of people come out. We were in five different locations across the city. It was really a great way to hear from people in these communities experience these streets in a different kind of way. The idea is you walk around in these different locations, generally centered around schools, parks, and and high pedestrian areas. And then people note there's there's surveys, there's a questionnaire, and then we were also taking notes discussing and taking photos of what was going on. So the the biggest concerns that we heard in all five locations over and over again are about speeding, failure to stop at stop signs, and failure to yield to pedestrians, which also aligns with what we saw in the crash data. Other things that came up were blocked crosswalks, faded crosswalks, inaccessible or non-ADA compliant sidewalks and intersections, obstructions, limited transit amenities, and then a persistent topic in Glendale, concerns about school traffic. Next slide, please. And here's just a couple of photos from those days. Photos people took of street conditions, and then also the photos of people out, you know, conducting the walk audits. Next slide, please. And so we've also, as part of this this work, we've been talking, we've talked to GPD, we've talked about their enforcement practices, heard from them about what their major concerns and priorities are. We've been researching education opportunities. And then as next steps, all this will go into a draft Vision Zero Action Plan. Where we are, as I mentioned, we're drafting countermeasures for those nine locations. We are pretty close to finishing an online GIS dashboard, which displays all of this data in an interactive way. You can look at individual years. You can look at all years. You can look at individual modes. This is an image of what that's going to look like. And then based on all the outreach that we've been doing and other precedents from the state and from the country, we're developing an outreach toolkit that will live beyond this project that the city and advocates and other interested parties can use to conduct their own walk audits or do other types of Vision Zero outreach. So with that, I conclude and open it for questions. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, I may add a couple of things. As you noted here, we'll be continuing to develop this plan as we move forward with our PDT, our public outreach. And then what we're looking for essentially is any any sort of feedback on this or things you might want to see in that action plan going forward. This might be a good time to put some of those recommendations in. If you're familiar with other Vision Zero plans, or if you've learned lessons from other ones, this is where we'd like to hear that and be able to factor that in as we move forward.
Okay, let me ask how many speakers we have.
We we currently have three speakers.
How about if we hear from the speakers and then council can ask questions and discuss?
Okay. Our first speaker is Alec Bartrosov.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to express my support for the Vision Zero program. I serve on the project development team. And one of the things that I noticed, I think the last time that we talked about crashes here at council was when one of you had mentioned that there was a downward trend in crashes. I'm happy to see that there's data that shows otherwise, that actually proves that even despite there being a pandemic, we did see both an increase in crashes, but also an increase in KSI collisions. So I'm happy to see that was highlighted in the presentation. One of the data points that was not highlighted in the presentation was the fact that senior citizens and folks that are not yet of driving age are disproportionately impacted by these KSIs. So I think there's something to be said about our community being an increasingly aging population, a population that is driving less than it used to, and making sure that those folks are protected on our streets. So the time that it takes for me to cross the street is very different from the time that it takes Mr. Mohill to cross the street. And I want to make sure that our streets are as safe as possible for people like him and like me and everybody in between. So we need this program because it highlights and points out where all the dangerous intersections are. I happen to live half a block away from one of the most dangerous intersections in the city of Glendale. And as somebody that walks, bikes, and drives in this community, I see the need for changes constantly. So I hope you can move forward with this. The only specific recommendation that I would like to make is that we, as a city, are very good at adopting plans. I'd like to see as robust of a program for implementing those plans. And it would be great to see an online portal that shows where we are and what's the progress of all of these plans. How much of it have we adopted or implemented? Where are we at? And where are these safety improvements? Because it's one thing for you to approve them and say that they're a good idea. It's another thing to get them implemented and to get them implemented in a reasonable amount of time. So that's what I'm personally interested in seeing that and making sure that the public is aware of those improvements as well. Thank you.
A quick clarification. Of the speaker?
Of the speaker, yeah.
You said something. You said you were happy to see the data showing more crashes. I just want to make sure you're not happy that there are more crashes. Maybe clarify that so that nobody runs away and says, Mr. Bartrosov is happy that there are more crashes on the streets.
It's helpful that staff and consultants have illustrated the crash data so that we can make informed decisions accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alec Balakian. You have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to make a comment. I've been watching city council sessions from this morning, and we had a lot of bewildered looks from people about how we could be in such a budget hole. And so this Vision Zero plan was not addressed before 2022. If you Google Vision and Zero in the Glendale City Council area, it was never addressed before 2022. And if you look at the data, which I think was intentionally misrepresented, there was a decrease in 2019. So that was not because of COVID and people not getting out and not driving. It decreased in 2019. Yes, it increased after that, but everywhere increased because there was reckless driving everywhere. $300,000 was spent on this consultant. You can see the line item there. Okay? Dan, today, this morning, you made the recommendation or the possibility of getting rid of crossing guards, not paying us, not paying for the crossing guards. You said maybe we should not pay for that and push back on Glendale Unified. That's $125,000. So $300,000 that is spent on this consultant could give them twice as many crossing guards as they were asking for. And that is exactly what this thing is supposed to do, right? It's supposed to decrease pedestrian deaths, children, but you want to cut a crossing guard funding that we are giving because Glendale Unified cannot afford to give it. So this was not an impartial consultant giving a report. If you look at the gentleman who was giving the report, if you look at his Instagram, it's very evident how he feels and what he was going to say. I could see it a mile away. And if you really wanted a high-impact solution to this, what you would do is have more traffic cops. Let's be honest. Let's be honest here. Okay, Glendale is full of very reckless drivers. I am Armenian. There are a bunch of Armenian men and women, and they're Mercedes, who are reckless drivers. Let's call a spade a spade. Okay? My grandmother, 40 years ago, was jaywalking across Glen Oaks, came out between two cars and got hit. 24% of those accidents that were there were problems with right of way. So 20 so fully one-fourth of those accidents, okay, were because the person like my grandfather, my grandmother, did not honor right of way. So there's so many other things. Number one, getting more traffic patrol cops, being much more strict. If you go above a certain speed, you get your car impounded. You have to pay $1,000 to get it out. Hit them where it hurts. But this consultant, all of this money that is being spent, it is not to make people safer. It is simply to peddle this unreasonable, unrealistic biking dream that no old feeble person like my grandmother would be able to participate in, and it's not going to make her any safer.
Can I clarify some misinformation?
Briefly, yes.
Briefly, I just want to say that I've never suggested we. Briefly, I just want to say that I've never suggested we have fewer crossing guards. All I suggested was we get GUSD to help us pay for them.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Mike Mohell.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohell. I heard someone mention my name in vain, so I thought I'd say something. Pedestrian crossing danger. I think the biggest problem are the Armenian drivers, Mr. Najarian, Alex Belikian. That's more dangerous than the pedestrian issue. We're talking about pedestrian safety, but let's talk about enforcing people who speed in our city. I've been cut off so many times by reckless drivers. It's terrible. Why don't we have more enforcement of our traffic laws? I've been, I've been... People pass me on the right-hand lane. People have passed me on the right, and then they get in front of me and make a left-hand turn. What's worse? A person who doesn't watch what they're doing when they cross the crosswalk? Or a reckless driver from Glendale? We need to look into both of them. I wish we had more law enforcement giving tickets. Because without a cop in the corner, people speed all the time. That's the big issue, and they're reckless. I have to, my wife closes her eyes when we drive by the Venice Hospital. Because of the drivers, who they are. Nothing to do with pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
We have two callers.
Okay, let's take them.
Our first caller is Jordan Henry. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, yes, thanks for taking my call. Please excuse me, I'm holding my one-year-old son right now, so he'll probably chime in. I am calling because of the OTS data that was mentioned by the overpaid consultant. And I called about this data a few weeks ago, about how pedestrians were really the only outstanding data point in terms of these collisions and injuries. I know that Dan Brotman has repeatedly cited that data, so I'm glad that it was brought forward again by a highly-paid consultant to make it clear that bike collisions are not our central focus in Glendale if we're going to really create a safer city. Investment, obviously, in traffic enforcement would help resolve this. Investment in infrastructure improvements, better visibility, maybe lighting up crosswalks, actually enforcing jaywalking, because like Dr. Belikian stated, a certain number of those collisions were actually caused by pedestrians and not necessarily by the drivers themselves. So please address the actual issue. I'm sure the prescription that Dan Brotman and Alan Isatryan and Artie Kasakian will bring up will involve bike lanes, a comprehensive bike system here in Glendale. And it's funny that that data was brought up, and he showed the corridors within the city, the major arteries that, you know, contained the most injuries, the most collisions. And Locker Center Avenue was not on that. Why is that? Why was a bike installation put on Locker Center Avenue with safety as a primary justification when your own data that you paid $300,000 for doesn't even show that as a necessity in that exact location? Again, I think there's an agenda at play. I think this is highly politicized. I think Dan Brotman does not, and others do not, serve the community. They prioritize bike activists over the public. The public deserves optimizing funding to create the most bang for our buck. Otherwise, we'll simply keep spinning the wheels here, no pun intended, to, you know, create more bike lanes that very few people use. I understand the need for some. I think that's fine. However, you keep citing this data, Dan, that has nothing to do with the prescriptions that you've laid out for the public, that you've basically forced down the throat of the public. And that includes Alan Isatryan and Artie Kasakian. Please do not manipulate this data or use it to your own political advantage. That is despicable, disgusting, and you're just, you know, lying to the public, essentially manipulating data.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Jenny Kenyonis. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much, council. I just want to make just two comments. I think when we talk about drivers in the city, I think it's very offensive when community members highlight or target one group of people. I walk in the city all the time, and there's been a very diverse group of people from many different backgrounds who have almost always mowed me down. So I think that that's important to remember for our community members too that are giving comments, that those types of comments are also prejudicial. And a lot of the people giving feedback tonight are basing it off of their own opinion. I do appreciate their own individual experiences. I appreciate the data from the consultant. I would like to urge council, though, to do more outreach in the South Glendale area, and also the consultant to look at that in the future. It looked like there was only one of those activities in South Glendale and Tropico. We are a huge area, and if you looked at the maps, the incidents were also happening in many parts from Pacific to Glendale Boulevard to Brown. And just to encourage to realize we are a very dense area within the city and, you know, have very unique needs. And because there are so many more people here, I think it's very important to have more of those outreach events within a dense area. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
Okay, just so we can frame our discussion, this is just an update as to where we are.
Mayor, that is correct. This is not about any specific implementation strategy. This is just presenting that data, any recommendations you have going forward. And what I will say in response to some of the comments, more enforcement may be actually what is part of this plan. That's what we'll be looking for as part of the public engagement. We essentially look at this program with this kind of three Es: engineering, enforcement, and education. So it's not about any one specific mode, and it's not about just physical improvement strategies.
Okay. Mr. Brotman, can we start with you?
I don't have questions. I just have comments.
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, this is...
Okay, okay.
Open discussion and...
I'll start off by saying it's amazing that we have people that are criticizing our efforts to improve street safety. It just boggles the mind. Or people that don't care about the data showing the high rate of pedestrian collisions, especially among our most vulnerable are elderly and kids. But that's par for the course, I guess. I like what we're doing here. I want to thank our team and the consultant. I think maybe people don't understand what Vision Zero really is. And I have a few notes here that I'll refer to, but, you know, it's a framework. It's a systemic or systematic, I should say, framework for eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries. It recognizes, and this is, I think, important. It recognizes that people will make mistakes, what we call accidents. The goal is to create an environment on our roadways that, number one, reduces the likelihood that these mistakes take place, and, just as importantly, makes them less deadly when they do occur. And we make them less deadly by reducing speed, because speeding is deadly. You know, it's a collaborative approach. It involves enforcement. It involves engineering. It involves education. And it has a specific focus on equity. And I think that's partly why we're seeing the prioritization showing particular intersections and segments. Partly that has to do not only with where we have crashes, but also where we have our most vulnerable communities, and that's where we want to focus. I think it's important that we learn from failures in other locations, other cities. People talk about the failure in Los Angeles, that Los Angeles passed Vision Zero in 2015, and serious injuries and deaths increased. And I think the main reason for that is lack of implementation. And that's something we need to be very cognizant of. Where they did implement the plan, they saw collisions, deaths, and serious injuries fall significantly. The problem was, they only implemented the plan in about 5% of the locations that they had identified, which led to, some people know, a citizen initiative called HLA that instructed, demanded, that the city do more to ensure implementation. So I think that's going to be key for us. It's being realistic, identifying those hotspots, prioritizing, applying cost-effective solutions, biggest bang for the buck with the least disruption to the community, using quick builds and other techniques to get short-term wins, coordinating across the departments, using all the tools of the triple E, the enforcement, engineering, and education. And I will say on enforcement, we have increased our police force by 23 sworn officers. Twenty-two? Okay, 22. I stand corrected. The vast majority of them are going to be focused on traffic enforcement and patrol. And people that are doing patrol also can do traffic enforcement. So we are doing it, okay? We are also working on a speed camera program, which some people have criticized. But this is also about enforcement, and it's about being able to cost-effectively extend the reach of our limited police officers, because they're never going to be everywhere all the time. So we are doing it. We just need to be committed to funding this over time and not overset expectations that we're going to eliminate injuries and deaths in, you know, three years. It's not going to happen. But move on with it. I know that you wanted some direction on kind of the toolkit, and I thought I would just say a few things. I won't be long. But I think we know from other work in this area that some of the most effective things that we can do are putting in pedestrian flashing beacons, what we call the RRFBs. I know our Public Works Director knows well what these are. Also, the pedestrian hybrid beacons, those are the yellow flashing ones. Not nearly as effective, a lot cheaper. But I think those two types of treatments are, you know, want to make sure, and I'm sure they would be part of the toolkit, I'm just kind of saying it. Left-turn signals are very effective in reducing pedestrian collisions when you have a dedicated left-turn signal. Leading pedestrian intervals, something I know I brought up probably five years ago. We have been implementing this. This is what's otherwise known as a pedestrian head start. It gives the pedestrian the walk signal before the cars get their green. So the pedestrian is in the intersection and more visible when the cars start to move and make their left and right turns. That's well-known to be an effective tool. Continental crosswalks, or otherwise known as zebra crosswalks, are very important. Something I know I've been pushing here for us to implement. Those show very good results in reducing collisions. And things like scramble crosswalks, which I think we've had some maybe not-so-good experiences with from a community perspective, but those also can be very effective. And there are other things, but I want to make sure those are part of our toolkit, and we focus on all these things. Because this is, you know, car-on-car crashes are bad, and speeding causes, you know, deaths there. Crashes with bicycles are bad. But pedestrian injuries and deaths are really our big problem. That's really where we are falling short. And we know, we're going to hear from the community survey, but we know that the top two issues for Glendale residents, one of those top two issues, far and away, is road safety. And so we have to be serious about this. This is something the community wants. And I guess I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Thank you.
Yes, council member, I said three.
I think Councilmember Brotman covered it all, more portion of what I was going to cover, but... Okay. So I'm not going to repeat the things that he's talking about. There's one big element for me, and it has to do with the community outreach and engagement and any community education piece that's going to be put together. I actually had a back-and-forth with Mr. Brotman when I saw the flyer for the walk audit. I keep talking about this when I see us put info out to step out of our own bubble and our own world. I know it's sometimes hard to do when staff's been living and breathing something. You speak in a different language. When a constituent or a regular resident is seeing a flyer that says "Walk Audit", you know, my initial response is, what in the world is a Walk Audit, right? So how do we make it more palatable for people to understand what it is that we're doing? I think I even had mentioned, you know, what's missing here is ice cream. Like, take a walk with ice cream and like, talk about streets, right? And I've mentioned this time and again with, if you're giving opportunities for social settings and incorporating different opportunities for our constituents to engage in not your formal, I would never, really, I would never go to a walk audit. And I don't know how many people would. So I think when we're talking about community education, given the diversity in our city, really holding maybe some group sessions with different communities and learning from them on some of the language and issues within each of the communities. I can maybe speak to some of it for the Armenian community that comes from Armenia, and some of those elements that can be in play. But I can't speak to that when it comes to the Korean community or the Filipino community. And so if you want your messaging to be right and for it to actually reach the audience and educate them, you actually also need to understand where they're coming from. I said this on one of the latest items that came recently. You know, when we talk about pedestrian safety, you know, if you go to Armenia, people are crossing the street because the cars are used to, or they're used to the cars waiting for them. And so they're coming here, and they're using that same methodology, which creates an issue here because that's not how we're built here. So if we don't know these nuances and systems within each community, we're not going to be able to drive that message home in a way that, you know, makes a difference in this space. And so I think overall, for me, the, any of the items that have to do, especially with crosswalks that Mr. Brotman mentioned, the lighting systems, the zebras, and all of that are important. But I do want to know, when it comes to implementation on the other plans, there is something to what Alec had mentioned about implementation. I remember, I think it was, what, 2012, when the bike plan was being put together some years ago. And I was on the community side of that, and I think there was some initial work that was done, but then we never heard from, I think the consultant had changed. I wasn't obviously here. I was on the outside. But looking at how quickly we're implementing it is going to be important because, you know, what was in 2012 is not the case now. So the implementation part, and I do like to see some sort of maybe online gauge of where we're at in different stages. And so I think that those are my comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
Generally, I think the research helps give us some information, although I have certain questions about how that impacts some of our policymaking here. And certainly, we are trying to do what we can to ensure that we're making our streets and our sidewalks safe for everyone. For instance, obviously, the speeding cameras that we voted for a few weeks ago are a part of that to ensure that people are following the rules of the road. Before I talk about what the vision is that I'd like to see for Glendale, Before I talk about what the vision is that I'd like to see for Glendale, obviously with as minimal fatalities, accidents, those with severe injuries as possible, and I think everyone would agree with that, I think Dr. Bilekian would agree with that as well as a medical professional, someone who's taken an oath to preserve people's health and lives. I want to address the issue, and I think some people jumped on the bandwagon when they heard a few people talk about, well, it's the Armenians doing the bad driving. Let me just be very clear, I've lived in different places, I've lived in Glendale the longest, but I've lived in other communities as well, and wherever you go, young people are not known for being the most law-abiding, careful drivers in those communities. And it has nothing to do with where they were born, what their ethnicity is, what language they speak at home. And if you talk to people who've lived in Glendale for a long time, as I often do, because I like to hear about how the city has changed over the years, folks will tell you that teenagers, long before the first Armenian set foot in here, or Armenians came here in large numbers, were driving fast cars and recklessly and speeding on different roads. So to try and speak as though you're trying to address an issue by scapegoating or pointing a finger at one group, let me just remind you that when you point a finger at someone, you have three fingers pointing right back at you. You ought to be careful in choosing your words. I think that we can do more work in educating younger drivers and soon-to-be drivers, but again, I urge folks from falling into the trap of scapegoating one particular ethnic group when there are multiple people that come through the city every day, who probably violate our rules of the road, and we don't want to go down the slippery slope of saying, well, it's this group or that group. So in terms of what we want to do for safety, one of the, I don't want to respond to the specific callers, because I think in their accusations that we're trying to politically charge it, they're the ones taking that politically charged step. What I really want to do is see a community in a city where everyone feels safe getting on the sidewalk, walking to the store, even getting in their car. I think universally, and in questions that we've asked the community and the feedback that's been received, people generally feel that there is a degraded quality of driving and respect for those rules. Enforcement certainly is one of them. I think my colleague Mayor Najarian has referenced this, as well as staff, the three Es, correct? It's education, enforcement, and engineering. So we're talking about doing one aspect of this, certainly education and outreach is another, engineering in some aspects, whatever form that may take. And I have said this time and again, driver's ed has been removed from our high schools. We sit here and we talk about, you know, what our budget is, but if we can spend a little bit of money, even if it's money that's going to hurt us to spend, because we're going to talk about, you know, we've had these conversations about where our budget is and where it's headed, but that helps pay dividends in terms of having more responsible drivers, better educated, younger drivers. I think it's money well-spent. So I would like there just to, again, engage the school district in conversation, see what young people are learning before they get behind the wheel of a car, and try and support the school and maybe collaborate with them, perhaps look for grants, but try and bring some of the driver's ed back into our schools. And, you know, we'll address each of the other recommendations as they come along to council in various ways. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Mr. Carpetian.
Yes, thank you. I have a quick question for staff. Since the bicycle transportation master plan was discussed here sometime last year, have we had any community outreach? Have you had any meetings with the, because the biggest complaint I get from, we have over 30 homeowners associations, and the ones that are, you know, they're outspoken, Rossmann, Royal Canyon, Northwest, Chevy Chase, Verdugo, I want to make sure that we go to them and they are well-aware of what's going on. When we're developing this plan, the community outreach has to be part of it, because I don't want to develop a plan up to 80, 90%, then we'll go to the community and say, here it is, we completed it. That's one of the questions I have, I don't know if you want to answer now or later, but...
We still have significant public engagement to do. At this point, we were primarily collecting our data, analyzing the data, trying to figure out where the challenges were, because that's also going to inform some more public engagement. But you saw kind of a small sampling at the end of the PowerPoint of things we have to do, but HOAs, the neighborhoods, those are all places we still need to go. In fact, we have a pretty diverse group on our PDT, even includes members from the Save the Wash group, are also part of that discussion, so we're trying to make sure we hit all sides of the conversation.
Got it. Well, look, we all know speeding is the biggest problem we have in Glendale, and what the magic answer is, I don't think any of us have that answered. It's enforcement, it's engineering, it's education, I think it's many, many different things. I think we need to go back and look at what happened in 2019, because 2019, we had the least number of accidents, and as far as, based on our police department's report, as far as fatalities go, with pedestrian and bicycling, involving bicycles and pedestrians, it was zero. We had no fatalities on that year. And I think we need to go back and see what we did. I remember that we would bring this cars from big crashes and place them on Glen Ox Boulevard and Verdugo Road. When you drive by and you see that thing, I don't care if you're 18 or 80, it affects you. I think visual is very important. I think data is very important, but I voiced my opinion about the way this, this plan has been put together and these numbers are being formulated. And because of that, you know, some people, you know, went out of their way and did a Photoshop of me in a car running over, with a big car running over kids with bicycles and stuff like that, which is childish. We all want safe streets, that's for sure. How do we get there? We have to work on it. My issue with this report, I think I'm mentioning this so we can, moving forward, we can maybe work on it, because when you have a report that indicates you have 5,125 accidents in 10 years, right? That is 512 accidents, these are injury accidents, not fender benders. That is 512 accidents a year, 1.4 accident a day. Is that a big number? It may be, but against, against what? Our city has about 200,000 in population, it's about 200,000. If half of them drive, not all of them, if half of them drive, that's 100,000 cars on the road on daily basis. If they make two or three trips a day, that's 200,000, 300,000 trips a day, not including people who come from outside the city between 7:00 to 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening and work in the city or visit city, they, you know, work, play, walk, whatever, they go to Galleria or Americana or anywhere else. And if you consider those trips as well, then we have 5,000 accidents a year in 10 years versus how many miles traveled in Glendale, how many people driving. We have to compare it and then come out and say, when you say in this report that Glendale is the worst in 60 cities, I don't like the way that is formulated. Those numbers may be right, but the way it's formulated puts us at the end of that rope, and I don't appreciate that. And also, when there is an accident, there's always someone in fault. Whose fault is it? Is it the pedestrian's fault? Is it the bicyclist's fault? Or is it the driver's fault? I think that's something we need to know. The other one is what percentage of accidents happen in Glendale are from people from outside? Because if you want to formulate something for Glendale, we have to see what the driving habits of our residents are, but we can't control the driving habits of people who come from outside. In our police report, from 2017 to 2024...
I'd like to move forward.
No, I am moving forward, yeah, I'm moving forward, because we were asked as to what our thoughts are about the plan, that's what I'm telling you. It's from 2017 to 2024, bicycle-involved collisions with fatalities are zero. But yet, part of this plan is to reduce traffic lanes and include class four bike lanes. If the goal is to reduce traffic lanes with two accidents, three accidents a day, I don't think that's a right goal. And if you want to know what people think, go to where they are, go to sports complex, Saturdays, Sundays, it's packed with people, and ask them, we're trying to remove a traffic lane, that's part of our bicycle, our mobility plan and bicycle master plan, we're trying to remove bike lanes on Verdugo Road and La Cremona Avenue and Glendale Avenue and install bike lanes, or not even install bikes, and tell them that you're trying to remove traffic lanes, and they will tell you if they're okay with it or not. I mean, if you want to do a research and find out what the, you know, people want, that's one of the things that I think we need to do, go to the community and find out what is it that they want to do. Again, I don't believe that Glendale is worse in any of these numbers, I think their formulation is wrong. And also, this last thing I mentioned is, this figure two, they had so many, so many dots on them, and when you look at it, you say, my God, why do we have this many accidents? But this is for 10 years, everything that happened in 10 years on one, on one, on one piece of paper, on one site plan, if you will. So I think community outreach is very important. Go to every homeowner's groups and historical society as well, and find out what people want. But I don't think that this, everything ends up, when we have all these reports, we need to have a result, we need to have some solutions. Every solution that I see, that these reports end up to be, majority of them are about removing a traffic lane from our major streets, and that's what I have an issue with.
Thank you. Notice to my colleagues, in light of the agenda items ahead of us, I'm now implementing the five-minute rule for your comments, and I may have to implement the 11:00 PM cutoff for this evening. This was a receive and file, and we have spent significant time with significant issues ahead of us. Councilmember Asadurian, you spoke for three and a half minutes, I can afford you a little bit, I'm going to speak, and we're going to move on. We've got a lot of business ahead of us.
I'm just going to keep it brief, because I can't let this go unanswered, but to downplay the numbers is simply irresponsible, I think. The reality is, if you ask anyone in the city if they feel safe walking, the answer would not be a resounding yes, which tells me there's a problem. We can all agree that we have serious reckless driving issues across our city, while the numbers may show how many fatalities or crashes we've had, what it doesn't show is the number of times someone's jumping off a street and onto a curb to avoid getting hit. The number of emails we get from parents that are with children in their strollers is an indication of that feeling that you have when you are walking and driving in the city. And so I think any comments that are downplaying, the reality is, we are one of the worst. So what are we doing to fix that? And to say that any of these ultimately suggests removing lanes means that you're only looking at that portion of the plan or the report, because clearly, there are many, many other sections part of that plan, which include whether it's the crosswalks or engineering and the education.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm going to be brief, and I do think that the characterization of Glendale drivers as being unsafe is an improper characterization based on the data. The data from the 2021 statistics, with 60 being the best and one being the worst, total fatal and injuries were 47 out of 60. If you had to grade that, maybe that would be a B or a B+. Alcohol involved were 52 out of 60, one of the top 10, maybe that's a B+, A-, had been drinking under the age of 21, 48 out of 60, had been drinking 21 to 34, 58 out of 60, almost the best city. And then motorcycles, motorcycle accidents, 53 out of 60, very good. We fall down when it comes to pedestrians, fifth worst out of 60. Pedestrians under 15, 15th out of 60. Pedestrians over 65, the worst, one out of 60. But bicycles were 44 out of 60. Bicyclists under 15 were 50 out of 60. The composite score is we're 56 out of 60 in the top 10% of cities. So let's put that in perspective. Do we have problems with pedestrians? Clearly. Could pedestrians be the problem? I leave that to the statisticians to make that connection, because every other category, we're doing quite well. I just want to put that out there. So of course, we all want the roads and sidewalks and driveways to be safe, but we shouldn't stop our efforts, but to say that we are the worst? No. Here it is, 2021 summary statistics, which is not even our best year. Our best year was in 2019. So let's put that all in perspective. The last thing I want to say is, I've done some reading on the Vision Zero enforcement, and there does seem to be some pushback, where enforcement in the worst areas often means that you're enforcing in the poorer areas of the city, which means that you're giving tickets and high-priced citations to the poorest of the city. That might be a problem. We have to think about the equity involved in that. We have people barely paying their rent, getting saddled with a $300, I don't even know what a speeding ticket is, I'm such a good driver, Mr. Molehill, don't point at me. It's got to be 300, $400 maybe. That would kill someone's budget, that would kill maybe the decision to buy food or to pay their ticket. But the flip side of that is, if you do the enforcement in the richer areas, then you're leaving the poorer areas with less safe streets potentially. So it's a double-edged sword, and an issue that I think we need to think about when we decide if enforcement is going to be our solution. I thank the presenter from Borough-Hapold, Mr. Calvert, Sam, Sam was his name, Sam, Sam Fromer, and this is something we're going to continue to work on, and we'll continue to give you input on with the outreach requested by colleagues and the great wisdom that sits here at the dais.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to ask staff to provide the data on page six, which is the 2021 summary statistics that shows Glendale is the worst. I'd like to see those numbers.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
65-plus. I, again...
Okay, and when I say the great wisdom, yeah, when I say the great wisdom at the dais, I'm being, you know, facetious, we're just regular people, we try and do what's best for the city.
I like to have those numbers.
Okay, yeah, can we get the underlying numbers for the 2021 statistics?
Yes, we'll send that out to council.
Very interesting. Okay, thank you. This is a note and file. Is there a motion to note?
I'll move.
Second? Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Stain.
Kusakia?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian? Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and our consultant. We're going to go now, as I promised, to 8E, Fire Department.
Fire Department, regarding request to establish a standardization of specialized high-capacity lifting equipment manufactured by Paratec Incorporated. Resolution to adopt a standardization policy and authorize the purchase of equipment and supplies manufactured by Paratec Incorporated.
Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Njorion, Member City Council, our Fire Department uses Paratek Incorporated airbags across all three fire truck companies and urban search and rescue apparatus, and are used for a wide range of rescue operations that require precision lifting and stabilization. Therefore, they're requesting, uh, adoption of a policy to standardize this and authorize the purchase of equipment and supplies manufactured by Paratek Incorporated. If you'd like additional details, Chief Brooks is available.
I think we all got a report.
We got the briefing, and folks, these are jacks, basically, air jacks, bags which will inflate and raise a vehicle or a structure or a beam or something of that nature. Are there any speakers on this item?
Mayor, I have no cards and no speakers on this.
Chief, do you wish to say anything?
Happy to move that.
Wise, wise man, chief. Very wise.
I'm happy to move that.
Councilmember Sotirian?
If there's no comments.
We'll move the item. Is there a second?
All second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sotirian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Njorion?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back up to the top of the agenda, 8A. Unless you want to drop a few spots. Are you ready, Mr. Mellon?
I am definitely ready.
Mr. Galanian, do you want to tee it up?
Uh, we'll, we'll wait for Mr. Njorion to read into record.
8A City Attorney regarding adoption of rules pertaining to council meeting procedures.
8A, we're going to 8A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
8A, no, you're correct.
8A, Glendale Water and Power requests to increase the ARB Incorporated balance of site engineering procurement and construction contracts, current contingency of 36,270,000 by 30 million to a new contingency amount of 66,270,000 as it relates to the potential tariffs which may be imposed on various equipment for the Grayson Repowering Project. One motion increasing the ARB Incorporated balance of site engineering procurement and construction contracts, contract number 8002399, current contingency of 36,270,000 by 30 million to a new contingency amount of 66,270,000. Two resolution of appropriation requesting 30 million for contract number 8002399 with ARB Incorporated.
Yes, Mayor Njorion, Member City Council, as, as you know, the new administration has enacted a series of tariffs on imports to the United States that will significantly affect the purchase of equipment for the Grayson Repowering Project, primarily the battery storage system, and to a lesser degree, the Wardsilla Power Island. The financial impacts of the current tariffs, because it's an influx, will be shared by Scott Mellon, our acting general manager of Water and Power, and he'll go into far more details than I shared with you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Njorion and council. I'll just kick it right off. So, just as a refresher on the project status, council may recall that there were three phases to the Grayson repower effort. There was a Unit 9 separation, demolition and soil improvement, and then the balance of site EPC agreement with the Wardsilla agreement included. Unit 9 separation and the demolition and site improvement contracts were completed either on time or ahead of schedule, and the remaining ARB balance of site EPC agreement and the Wardsilla agreement have progressed as discussed in last week's council sessions, essentially 38% complete and 60% complete respectively. As it relates to the individual construction elements, they're between 10% and 45% effective.
Yeah, a little louder.
God, I feel like I'm yelling at it.
You're not.
Is that a little better?
A little better.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, let's see. As the council is likely aware, there's been significant turmoil with regards to the implementation of tariffs since President Trump took office in January. This timeline provides presidential decision points during the last five months, but doesn't quite capture the ambiguity caused by this on-again, off-again process. Staff and contractors have been spending a great deal of time attempting to plan for possible scenarios at each of these decision points, including having to rewrite the staff report as few as five days ago to include the latest 90-day pause implemented on May 11th, which shifted the tariff on China from 145% down to 30%. Following slides will address cost impacts and scenarios and the latest 30% tariff on The table on this slide identifies the project estimated increases to both Wardsilla and ARB agreements due to related current tariffs. At this time, GWP believes that the estimated tariff cost for the Wardsilla engineering and procurement contract can be accommodated by the existing contract contingencies. However, the $24.2 million tariffs that fall within the scope of the engineering procurement and construction contract with ARB, combined with the already committed contingency, exceeds the available contingency for the contract. GWP is currently considering the following scenarios in our effort to mitigate the tariff impacts. First thing, increasing the authorized contingency by 30 million, an amount that GWP can support without a rate increase, and consider modifying the scope of the, of the battery energy storage system as may be necessary if the tariffs are not reduced or mitigated before the date when a final decision on the number of batteries must be made. And that date's coming up quickly. Two, complete the BEZ project but defer purchase of the batteries until tariffs are reduced or an alternate battery supplier can fit the project physically and electrically is identified. Three, we're considering canceling the BEZ portion of the project. Now, this, this option is the least attractive for many reasons. The least of which is being that, that they have a significant cost associated with the batteries, but there's relatively little money that can be saved this late in the procurement cycle from cancellation of the BEZ-related electrical equipment, which includes four transformers, switchgear, and some power inverters. Also, as we are working to qualify for the investment tax credit and have already received authorization for deferred sales tax, removal of the batteries would undo both qualifications. So our primary focus is on scenarios one and two. A decision to authorize the additional 30 million is necessary now due to the quickly closing window to decide on the delivery of the batteries, after which the only option may be to cancel the batteries due to lack of available contingency. 30 million is an amount that GWP has determined can be funded without an impact on rates, I wanted to make sure that was understood well. And based on how the tariff situation progressive, progresses, GWP's goal is to complete the project. If that can't be accomplished under the original design and scope in concert with the additional contingency, GWP would negotiate to reduce the number of batteries. If that also was not sufficient, we would consider completing the project but deferring purchase of the batteries to some later date. For these reasons, staff recommends increasing the ARB balance of site engineering procurement and construction contract, current contingency of 36,270,000 by an additional 30 million to a new contingency amount of 66,270,000, and authorize GWP to modify the scope of the BEZ as might be necessary to remain within the limits of the new contingency. Also, implement the resolution of appropriation as necessary. I'm available for questions.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Mayor Njorion, I have three cards and one caller.
Let's take the speakers.
Beth Brooks?
You know what I'm going to say? You know, I asked somebody who, uh, you know, to give me a little background about, you know, what this is all about and how it started, and, and you, you only got three gas-powered generators and the batteries and this and that. First of all, how could you ask for money before you even know what the tariff is going to be? I mean, I don't even, that doesn't even logically make sense. Ask for the money, and you want to go for, number one, ask for it when you know what the tariff is going to be. Right now, say, okay, you know, based upon this, it's going to be, uh, 30 million extra dollars so that they have 66 million dollars sitting in a, in a reserve fund. You know, that's a, again, it's, it's a lot of money. Why can't you wait until you, after the pause? I mean, I don't know, maybe it's going to get more expensive, or you're going to lose the tax breaks or something, you know, something like that. But still, my, my opinion about all these things is basically, if it starts to look like it's snowballing and it's spending all this money, and apparently, I thought this thing was supposed to save money, I don't know, I saw some videos where it's supposed to save money and 170 million dollar savings, and all it is, is like, you know, this, this never-ending, you'll never recoup this money, you will never save money with this, it's just spend, 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 and more spending. I mean, at a certain point, you say, maybe it's a failure to, to continue on a, on a path where it's only spending, and you're never going to save, nobody's got, you're never going to get a savings out of this. So, you know, I do feel that when you look at these projects, to say, well, let's keep spending, because you still have to, you still have to complete this, this failure in a sense, you know, just give it up. Just go the cheapest way possible and, and, and do whatever you can, and just abandon this continuous spending that is never going to save the city one penny. I don't know, it's, it's, I don't see that you're going to save 170 million dollars with this, and that's how it was presented in the beginning, I suppose, uh, but now all it is, is, you know, what, 770 million? I mean, is it almost a billion? And what will it be next year? At a certain point, again, you have to say no, you have to just take the cheapest route. I don't know, I don't know why you didn't have five gas-powered generators, that's my opinion. Why you went down to three and you needed to have batteries, I have, I have no clue. I really have no clue, I guess it's the 2030, you know, Newsom, let's all, you know, electrify, which also doesn't make sense. It just, you know, at a certain point, just cut your losses and run. That's what I think.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mike Mohill? Mike?
I said to Lee, the first 80 seconds of my three minutes will be the video. Try to get that up.
Attention Glendale residents. By the authority vested in me by the USC Board of Trustees.
No.
I hereby confer upon John M. Chu.
How do we get this stuff off?
There you go.
Attention Glendale residents, if you are shocked by your high electricity bills, I'm going to tell you who is personally responsible and how he's about to spend 200 million dollars of our money. Dan Brotman personally negotiated the bad deal that we find ourselves in, and he brags about how he did it.
My name is Dan Brotman. Glendale is implementing a deal I brokered between climate activists, energy providers, and the city. This will result in cheaper electricity and cleaner air.
He even said he was going to save the city money.
Our plan was not only doable, but would actually save Glendale almost 175 million dollars.
But he didn't save us money. Instead, he put us into debt for nearly three times that amount. He pretends that he's a man of the people.
I'll be accountable only to the public. I know the difference between a well-intentioned idea and a practical solution.
But when you tell this man that his well-intentioned idea has become a horrible nightmare for all of us, Councilman Dan Brotman.
On council, I will be beholden to no one but you, the residents of Glendale.
Becomes dismissive and nasty.
I'm really tired of all of this nonsense. Now, you might not believe in climate change, you might not care about climate change, you might not think there's anything we can do about it, I don't care, I'm not interested.
I don't care, I'm not interested. So earlier today, Dan, you suggested defunding crossguards, crossing guards for schools. You, out of the 1.1 billion dollars that Glendale spends every year, you couldn't cough up 125,000 dollars to fund a crossing guard. Ellen, you made the same comment about why don't we not fund, if, should we make Glendale unified fund it, the resource officer? That suggestion-
Point of privilege.
Yes, your point of privilege. Stop my time, please? Thank you.
Would like to clarify, um, I don't know, I recognize First Amendment rights, uh, but when someone is speaking misinformation and just utter untrue statements from this morning, what are the procedures here? Because that is not what, those were not my comments from today, I never suggested that. So I would like to know what, I recognize First Amendment, he's able to say whatever he'd like. I'm just trying to understand at what point, especially if we're discussing a council item or something that, that was discussed on this dais, and something else is being said from the podium, what are the-
So as a, as a, the rule on that point of-
Point of order.
Privilege, point of order, um, I, I don't believe that there's any way that the chair can stop him from making any statement at all, even if you feel it does misstate your statements, you do have the opportunity after he's completed to, to set the record straight within reason, in a reasonable amount of time. But, uh, you know, at time to time, we all have, have these concerns, but, um, let's go back to, put a, put five more seconds, can you add five more seconds or it doesn't work?
We'll just let it run, five more seconds longer.
Okay. So hopefully that interruption period is taken. Please, continue.
Sure. For the 9:00 AM budget session from today, May 10, people can go to the 1 hour and 45-minute mark where Dan says his comment, and then you say, oh, that reminds me about the school resource officers. So what are Glendale parents supposed to think? That even if you're not going to follow through with it, the thought of compromising their children's safety by not funding a crossing guard, by not funding a school officer crosses your mind simply because you want to have your 60 million dollar batteries? What are parents supposed to think when you prioritize your batteries over their children's safety even for a second? Okay? I'll tell you what they're thinking. They don't care, they're not interested. So if I were on the dais, what I would do is cancel this project, return the order, cut our losses, prioritize our people, our public safety over these vanity projects. That is my recommendation, I hope you follow it.
Thank you. Would you like to, since you raised it?
Sure. During the budget session, don't know at what minute it was, um, I did note that we should be taking a look and having a conversation with our GUSD partners. When you look at other cities, um, there are very different models in place of how that costs are split. My suggestion was for us to have the conversation with GUSD on sharing those costs and looking at different models that different cities use in order for us to be able to make some savings. I did not suggest that we cut them, I did not do that at any point, and as a matter of fact, I don't think that Mr. Brotman was doing, doing that either. So, um, while it looks like election season has officially begun for you, I think it's very irresponsible for you as a resident, and now, I guess, a potential candidate, to continue these misinformation that you're using this podium for. So, thank you.
So I, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, please. I mean, the same thing, campaign season is on, people can get up here and lie, that's what we're hearing, he's going to continue to lie, um, and I just hope the public sees through it.
Thank you. And I do have one comment, and it's, um, for anyone who presents a video or any sort of slide to the city clerk to be broadcast, please make sure there are no other logos indicating any sort of campaign office or campaign intention, even if they may be outdated, and if the city clerk can just keep an eye on that. I, I don't want to mention exactly what it was, but, um, make sure that if we do have it, that we can crop it so that, um, there's no extraneous, uh, non-permitted, I believe it's, would be non-permitted, to the sense that you're using city facilities to promote a campaign, let's make sure that, that we don't have any trouble with that. Thank you. Next speaker?
Jordan Henry? Jordan?
Yeah.
Jordan, go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Great. Thank you so much for taking my call on this. We need to hold our city council officials. We need to hold our city council officials accountable for their lack of response to this issue. Now, the public, if you're listening to me, I'm going to throw out a bunch of numbers. The city council already knows this and if they don't, well, they're irresponsible. But listen very carefully to the reality that we're dealing with. Back in 2015, 10 years ago, GWP made the proposal to increase to repower Grayson Power Plant to about 260 megawatts of power, 260 megawatts of power. And that would have cost us at that time, $350 million. Okay? 260 megawatts for $350 million. Currently, the current proposal is only going to be half of that megawattage, 130 megawatts. And guess how much it costs? If this gets approved, $582 million. So we're paying nearly double for half the capacity. Nearly double for half the capacity is what your city council has given to you, the taxpayers, the hard workers of Glendale. This is reprehensible. We should all be up in arms about this, the fact that this is a, a complete negligence of their duty to oversee the best interest of the city. We all know that we have issues. We need updates to our utilities. They knew it then and they did nothing. They did a, they acted politically to move forward with the, this, this green, quote unquote, green agenda, but all it did was offer you less and charge you double, half the power for double the cost, nearly double the cost. That's what you just got in 2025, when all of this could have been resolved in 2015. And that repowering proposal, the original at Grayson, would have been a revenue increase for the city, one that would have, you know, been a way out of our nearly billion, or over billion dollar, I believe, unfunded liability that we owe, that we're obligated to pay to CalPERS, which is another issue. I am disgusted by the fact that we are now 10 years after the fact, when this first proposal was presented to the city council and y'all sat on your hands to win the next reelection. How dare you? I have children in this city. They won't be able to afford, they won't be able to afford living here because
Thank you. Your time is up.
Like you. Disgusted.
Any other callers or cards?
That's all.
Okay. To the colleagues. I've got my clock going.
I have one question.
Mr. Brotman.
But then I'll have comments later.
Okay.
Okay. The question is for Mr. Mellon. And could you explain why you're coming to us now for this $30 million when we don't know what the actual level of tariffs is going to be? So that's a legitimate question. It was a question I asked you in the briefing and I think it's important to explain to the public.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilman Brotman. Basically, it comes down to timing and the scheduling of building this facility and delivery of hardware. At some point, so we have committed, we have bought some of the rare earth materials that go into the assembly of the batteries. What we haven't done is actually committed to the build of the batteries. In order to have the batteries delivered at a time when we will actually need them, which is by the summer of 2026, we have to commit very soon to getting those batteries in the assembly line. Basically, we're in a queue. There's a great deal of the world that is accessing these lithium ion batteries. CATL is a very dominant force in the lithium ion battery area in the industry. So everyone is looking to them for a supply of these batteries. So in order for us to maintain our queue and to hit the schedule when we need the batteries to be online, we have to commit to putting money down and moving forward and getting those batteries delivered to us. So we have to have sufficient amount of dollars to do that. It may be inconvenient, but the reality of the world right now is that the tariffs are dictating what we believe will be the market price for these things. As soon as they are delivered, come across the border, we have to pay that additional fund. So we have to kind of plan for the possibility that based on what we know right now for the tariffs, this is the idea of how much it's going to cost us to, to pay for the batteries and have them delivered on site by December is when they start being delivered to site.
Does that address the, the issue?
I'll have comments later. Let's get through a couple of questions.
Mr. Garpetian.
So the, the $30 million in contingency that we have right now, right? That's about, our contingencies are pretty much 10% of the, the project. So it's for $300 million. What is, what are these contingencies for? What part of the project is this contingency for that we have in place?
The additional contingency that we're asking for?
No, the one that we have currently, right? We have 30 million in contingency and we're asking for 32 million dollars increase, right? So that 30 million that we have today currently, what is it, what is it for? What part of that project, that contingent? Because the project is not 300 million. It's based on my calculation from November of 2023. It's 670 and 70 was for the biogas project. Give and take, a little bit up and down. So that, that, that 300, 30 million is for what part of that contingency?
The original 36 million, I believe, was for the ARB contract contingencies that ended up covering, so we had to have, make significant modifications in foundations. We had to make modifications to structural supports for the control building and the administration building. There's a, so giving a list of things that were covered by the contingency. At one point, those two buildings had to become a single building, which pushed it up into a third floor, which then triggered a bunch of support structure and foundational stuff that had to go in. So there was additional costs that needed to go into the build out there. We had material issues that came up. We had supply chain issues that we, in order to get things delivered and to us on time, we had to pay ahead. So there were, there were, within the SAV report, there's a long list of items that actually went towards the contingencies.
And can you explain the, the Power Island, the 36 million, $362 million and 700,000?
Sure.
With 10% contingency, which is around $400 million with the contingency.
Right. So Power Island is one of the pieces of the ARB EPC contract. What is covered in that, within that Power Island is predominantly the batteries, the PDC, basically the distribution points, how the energy is moved from the batteries to common switchgear, PCSs, which are the inverters essentially, and cabling and conduit and foundations and all related system support for the batteries.
Okay. And this 30, are we asking for 36 million today or 30 million extra? Which one is it?
30 million extra.
30 million. And where is it coming from, Mr. City Manager? That 30 million?
Electric revenue funds.
Electric revenue fund. So we have extra 30 million in our electric revenue fund to transfer to this project?
That is correct.
So it will increase the cost from, let's say, 670 to 700 million. Okay. That's all.
I have a question. Is there any way we can seek a waiver of the tariffs? Is there any possible, I imagine it's implemented by the Commerce Department? And would a advocacy trip explaining that these aren't just, you know, vacuum cleaners and automobile tires and, and mops that were, you know, that, that were buying, that this is a critical infrastructure, a component that this city and its residents rely on? I mean, have we, do, is anyone else doing something like that? Because I'll go. I got the credentials to go up there.
I would invite anyone who wants to speak on our behalf to please do so. I did meet with Assemblymember Friedman's staff. They actually reached out to us. Sorry?
Congresswoman.
Congresswoman, sorry. My apologies. Congresswoman Friedman's staff, talked to them for quite a bit. They're very interested in our conundrum and they were going to see what they could do about it, but it is a
She's the person to go to.
Yeah.
This is very partisan.
I, I agree.
Can you look into that? I know you don't have an answer, but please look into that. If there's any way, you know, we can do that or at least get a reduction or something of that nature, it would cert, I mean, it's a lot of money that would solve a lot of, well, I mean, it's, it's electric fund money, but it would certainly
Sure. As an aside to this effort, we are in negotiations with CATL and with our subcontractors to see what they can manage. You know, we're talking reductions in profit on their part. We're talking about how we can deliver. Can we take part of the battery delivery? Can we delay out? We're, we're looking, we're asking all the questions, kind of set us up with the possibilities. So when we, even when we do make a decision, we can work about, work on the commitment for the dollars so that, you know, if, if there's an opportunity in the future, we can take advantage of that, you know, when the tariffs are lowered possibly or, you know, cooler heads prevail, something occurs. We're, we're not stopping looking at the possibilities, I guess is what I'm getting at. And then we are trying to get insight and assistance wherever we can.
The worst case, well, it could get worse.
It could get worse.
This is a present case, present case scenario.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone else?
I will have comments.
Mr. Brotman, you have comments?
When the time
I think now is as good a time as any.
I may need more than five minutes because these kind of allegations have been made and misinformation has been presented that
By the speakers?
By the speakers. And, and other things I've heard on the dais. No, other things I've heard on the dais and I want to
Okay. Dais comments, okay, but try not to focus too much on the speakers. Okay, go ahead.
Let me start and then we can, if, if I go too long, you can stop me and then maybe I'll come in the second round, if that's possible. So I just, I want to make sure people understand how we got here. So in 2015, a proposal was presented by Glendale Water and Power based on 260 megawatts or 262 megawatts all gas system consisting of two, I believe, large Siemens turbines. The estimated cost at the time, and you can go back and see what Mr. Zern was telling us, was around 500. Sometimes we heard 600, but I think the number that we mostly heard was, was 500 million. That, that proposal was rejected by council. Okay? I was certainly an advocate on the outside for that, but that was rejected in a four to one vote by this council, a council, I should mention, that Mr. Garpetian was sitting on at the time. In June 2019, Glendale Water and Power came back with an alternative proposal. The alternative proposal was for five Wartzilla engines, which are small modular, quick, quick ramp up, peaker, what are called peaker units and a large battery energy storage system. Originally, the idea was it would be 50 megawatts now, 25 megawatts later down the road and these five, what are called BESS, battery energy storage systems. We do our, something called an IRP, an Integrated Resource Plan, whenever we make big changes like that. We do them every five years otherwise. An Integrated Resource Plan is a long-term plan, I think, looking with a 20-year horizon at how we are meeting our obligations, both here to provide power reliably as well as to meet any, any state or other legal requirements we have to carry reserves. So we have these IRPs. So I went back and I pulled out the 2019 IRP because that was the one that was done when this new plan was presented. And I'm just going to read a few things from the 2019 IRP. And this is before I was on council. This is GWP saying this. Okay. They said, "The resource portfolio recommended in this Integrated Resource Plan will firmly establish Glendale Water and Power as the national, as a national clean energy leader. The recommended portfolio outperforms standards for reliability, greenhouse gas emissions and renewable portfolio content while simultaneously saving over 125 million in costs and reducing thermal capacity by 169 megawatts compared to the 2015 power plan." One more. Well, maybe two more. "GWP firmly believes that the power plan proposed in this IRP represents the cleanest and most cost-effective option to ensure reliable power for the city of Glendale after Grayson retires." I think I have one more. I did have one more. Okay. Well, I think that's enough. There's a lot of information in this, in this plan. So I did want to make that clear. Now, a lot of things have happened since 2019. It took Glendale Water and Power a number of years to finally bring this project to us. They had to go through an EIR. And a lot has happened, such as COVID, supply chain issues, inflation, many, many things. And now we have the tariffs. So we're, you know, we're in a difficult situation. But it's important to note a few things and I'll, if I can, I don't know how long I've gone. Are you?
We've got four minutes.
Okay. You can come back to me if you want. I have, I have more. Okay. We've heard on this dais several times, concerns about how we're building this project around a big battery, battery energy storage system and these small Wartzilla gas engines that are designed to operate only to meet peak energy needs and to provide system backup. And suggestions have been made that we made a mistake by permitting the gas units for a 14% capacity factor, meaning they can only be used 14% of the hours out of the year. At one point, Mr. Garpetian said, "If it were up to me, I'd replace the batteries with engines tomorrow because batteries do not generate power." And he also said, I know at least twice, "We need to have a plan or we better start looking into our plans to see what can be done to generate locally." So let me start by reminding him and the public that we go through a very comprehensive planning process every five years by law, as I said. It's called an IRP. This process considers all of our resources, our current energy demand, and then layers on top of that forecasted future demand from electrification, which, some of which are numbers that are provided by the state based on these very aggressive vehicle electrification plans. We run many, many scenarios, I think hundreds of scenarios to stress test the system under adverse conditions, including the loss of transmission and other resources. And through all of this, we need to demonstrate that we have what we need to keep the lights on, including a legally required reserve margin. And all this has to be approved by the California Energy Commission. We don't just get to make it up. So I think as a first step, it would be a good idea for my colleagues here to look at these very detailed and comprehensive plans before saying we need a plan. Okay. Let me also suggest that folks go back and watch the July 23, 2019 council meeting. Okay? At this meeting, the council, of which I wasn't on, Ms. Ossiterium wasn't on, Mr. Kasakian wasn't on, Mr. Najari, you were on it, and Mr. Garpetian, you were on at the time, voted to approve the Grayson redesign, which is essentially what GWP is implementing now. That redesign was based on a number of elements, which I mentioned, the 75 megawatt battery system, the small, the five Wartzilla engines. And I should point out that it was discussed at the time very clearly that these would only be permitted for 14%. They would have a 14% load factor. It was explicitly laid out in the IRP. It was discussed on council and I went back and watched the, the tape and Mr. Garpetian mentions the 14%. So it was all known. There was also initiative developed, to develop local clean energy resources. Essentially, the system we're implementing today is the same system that today is the same system that, or the same design that was presented then. All we have changed is that we've reduced the number of Wartzilla engines from five to three, and we've accelerated, or we hope to be accelerating, the battery, battery implementation by doing the full 75 megawatts upfront. Okay? And I don't have that much more. Just give me a few more minutes. If anybody wants to attack that, or if Mr. Garpetian wants to attack it, let me remind him that included in the resolution in July 2019 that he voted for was a condition that staff look at options to reduce or replace the five units with alternate technology. And there was a resolution, I should mention, which he also voted on, which called for GWP to develop plans to achieve clean, 100% clean energy by 2030, which it turns out was overly ambitious, something I recognized at the time. And after Mr. Kasakian and I joined council, we modified that to a still ambitious, but more realistic 2035 number. So I think it's strange that Mr. Garpetian doesn't remember any of this, or doesn't want to remember it, suggests that we're somehow flying blind with no long-term plans, when he approved the long-term plan that our system is being designed around today. And strange that he continues to raise doubts about the design with, with the battery system and the Wartzilla engines limited to 14% when he voted enthusiastically the last time he was on council. And he did say, by the way, "This is a great step toward a better future for the people of Glendale." Look, the system we have now is not perfect. We've fallen short on local distributed energy resources. Interest rates have gone up. The cost of financing is now higher than was originally anticipated. We're now getting caught up in the tariffs that our fearless so-called new sheriff in town is imposing on Glendale ratepayers. But we are doing what council set out to do in 2019, again, with Mr. Garpetian as an enthusiastic supporter, and again, before I was on the dais. So I should say what a difference a day makes, or maybe what a difference a change in political party makes. Thank you.
Thank you. That was 10 minutes.
Okay, well, I'm done.
May I give the floor to Mr. Garpetian, I presume, unless someone else wants to get between the, good thing I have you guys on.
I appreciate, yeah, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine. I appreciate that. I think.
And you have 10 minutes. I mean, if you need 10 minutes.
No, no, I don't need 10 minutes. I, I think we, we often talk about, we have an item on the agenda, we have to stick to what's on the agenda, and we go on other things. But let me, let me tell you this. I have to go back and check all the, all the comments that were made here today. But at the end of the day, when you reduce from five or six engines to three, and then you push for electric, if you, if, if this council of the city, of the, or GWP believes that our current Grayson power plant, the way it's being built, is going to support the needs of this community, you're dreaming. You are dreaming. We're spending $14 million on five-megawatt solar system that we're installing. 14 million for five megawatt. Do you know how long does it take for batteries to be charged with five-megawatt of, of solar days? 75-megawatt of batteries. You need to, this is, I, my goal is not, not to, not to have batteries. My goal is not, it's never been that way. We were more greener than this council pretends to be. When I was on, in, in, from 2015 to 2020, we looked in the future. But by saying that, no, you have to, you have to purchase power in order to charge your batteries. If you're purchasing power during the day, which is sunny, and solar generates power, you're okay. But winter time, fall, last week it was raining. When you don't have that solar generation, you have to purchase power to charge the battery, then discharge it. And that's like oxymoron. I, I, batteries are good to have, but it's not generation. You're not generating power. Batteries are not, it's not a generation. You don't generate power. And when you reduce it to 14%, you signed off on it, not me, if you want to go back and forth on it. I will go back and look at it.
You voted for it. I wasn't here.
But, but, no, no, look, I didn't interrupt you, this, this, you know, it goes around. It's okay. But I understand that people make decisions, and they come back and see it's not the right decision. They're trying to somehow justify it. What I'm trying to say is, this project has been crippled the way it's been designed. I was against it. I was here in 2023, speaking against it in November of 2023, when you approved all the budget for it, and you approved the three grants that we have to, not grants, help me out here.
Wartzillas?
No, 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 bonds, three bonds that we have to issue. So by pushing electric, fully electrification, by doing all these things, this power plant is not going to support the needs of this community. You want to believe it, believe it. You don't want to believe it, you will see. The prices are going to go even higher because the state is mandating, if you're purchasing power in open market, big portion of it has to be a green energy. And when it's hot and everybody's running their, their AC units, guess what? That green energy is, instead of $10 a kilowatt, it's $100 a kilowatt. It's, it's very expensive. We were never been against having a, a, a clean environment, but you need to be able to support the needs of your community. And I don't think this, and the cost has gone up. The entire project was 500 million. Today it's 670. And with tariffs, of course, it's no one's fault. But that's going to be another 700, if not more. I mean, not no one's fault. There are people who are involved, but not us. But, you know, I'm not, I don't want to this, go this back and forth. I voiced my opinion, and I know I'm right, that, that 14%, how can you have 55 megawatt with 14%? I mean, that's, that's all I have for right now. I may reserve the right for another four or five minutes that I have at the end.
You've gone for four and a half.
Okay.
Councilmember Ossetorion, any comments?
The only thing I will say is, this is a big-ticket item on the agenda and has garnered a lot of attention, but I don't think we're doing many favors to the public by not clearly explaining that. First of all, we would have, should have, could have. Everyone here holds responsibility for where we are, whether you voted for something or you didn't. Our ultimate responsibility now is to see this project through to its completion. I think one of the suggestions was scrap this whole thing. I don't believe that would work, Mr. Mellon. Tell us, what are the consequences of, at this stage, what happens if we abandon this project, whether it's the batteries or the repowering attempt for Grayson? What are our options?
So at this point in the project, we already have the engines for the Wartzilla delivered into the state. We're working out how we're going to get it delivered to site. We have a large chunk of the equipment, either on its path to getting here or here for most of the facility. Batteries are the only thing that are outstanding. We do have transformers and a few things that will be on their way.
Recommend completing the project without battery storage?
No.
Thank you.
Because it's our only option.
There, there we have it. So I, I understand that people are going to be unhappy and upset. But to say to not do this, I don't know what any person who suggests that is trying to gain in terms of clout, followers, make, make us look bad for whatever the case may be. You know, my interest is to make sure that we complete this project, we're able to turn on the lights in the city of Glendale. And for that reason, although I'm not happy, I do agree with council, with Mayor Najarian's suggestion that we try to reach out, figure out ways to get the federal government to perhaps reverse course on tariffs on these items, which are absolutely critical for infrastructure. I don't think your average homeowner is looking to purchase and install batteries on this scale. And for that reason, it's important, and we, we're, we find our place in, ourselves in a place today where these batteries have to come from overseas. They come from a country that perhaps is not on, necessarily on the best of terms politically and ideologically with the United States, but is one of our largest trade partners. And we are stuck between a rock and a hard place, or a battery and a hard place. So we have to figure out how to get these. Now, I will support this item for approval. And when the time comes, I'm happy to make the motion, if no one else will, because I think getting this project completed takes priority over any of the other personal issues or ideological sparring that anyone wants to do, which I'm happy to do offline with anyone who has these concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Mellon, these aren't Tesla products, are they?
No, they are not.
Would Tesla have been a, because we were considering them at some point.
We were considering them.
Was that U.S. manufacturing?
At that time, I don't know that all their hardware was in the U.S. I know that they were building facilities, I believe, at that time, but I don't think they were ready for it to become a complete made in the USA. I know there's a very specific criteria about how much of the product has to be made in the United States. I don't know that right off the top of my head, though.
Okay. Personally, I think, well, first, I'd like to say, when I made those decisions and those votes back from 2015 on, I did so with the best interests of the city at mind to provide reliable, economical energy to the city. I may have caused some of the delay. I, I forget what year it was, 2021, entertained a review with Mr. Brotman. When was that? 21? We re, we said, "Let's pause and let's make sure that we've done everything possible to make sure that, that we're doing the right thing." I know the city manager was not happy with me at that time. I think that was a 3-2 vote, if I'm not mistaken, and I was on the three side. He was mad at me, but I thought we owed it to our residents to make sure that, that we were at least exploring every other option. Be that as it may, that's the way it is. I don't think we have any alternative at this point than to go forward and appropriate the third, extra 30 million and add it to the contingency. Hopefully, we won't need that. Political winds change. I mean, tomorrow, the tariffs could be lifted. But then again, they could continue and could even get worse. But that's just where we're at. So, Mr., because, oh, no, I didn't know. I thought you were, okay. No, of course, of course. Ms. Councilmember Ossetorion.
I'm going to keep mine very brief. When Grayson came for a vote, I voted against it. I voted against it not just for environmental reasons, but I said that it was fiscally irresponsible for us to make this investment because there was a requirement from the state, and continues to be a requirement from the state, for us to go 100% clean air by 2045. And I felt that that kind of an investment, and for us to also invest in clean energy at the same time, doesn't really leave room for that. When the IRP came, I was adamant about us following our own policy of only solving for the 2030 and 2035. And I also noted that if we're not going to solve for that, and if that's not our IRP we need to submit, then we should be looking at our policies. I don't like having policies on paper and then doing something else. If it's not going to work, then I want us to have a realistic expectation of what are the goals that we're setting, because it pins the community against the council, it pins the council against staff, and it's not realistic. You're just working off of these goals that you've set, but they're part of your policies. So use them when you want, and you don't when you don't. So I have continuously either voted against or abstained from items that had to do with Grayson because I didn't support the project. And more so, if, not going into the details, but I remember right before the vote, staff was recommending five. Council then noted that they wanted three. I had at the time said, "Why three?" And there was no clear answer given. And so I said, "I can't support something that doesn't have specifications." And those are all my reasonings for why I didn't support this project. Having said that, I recognize that this project is moving forward. And I think that moving forward, it would be irresponsible of me to continue to abstain and to vote against because I didn't do that because I wasn't supporting it. It's here. The council continues to make decisions. And so, moving forward, I will not be taking into consideration the fact that I voted against this project because that means I'm missing out on voicing my opinion on a matter that continues to guide the city. So with that, I would be supporting it. If there's anything that we can do to help lobby, please let us know. And that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kasakian, did you want to make the?
I have a few comments to make.
Yes, you do have five and a half minutes, if you need.
Well, a couple of questions for Mr. Mellon. Is STANTEC still part of this project?
Yes.
Is it part of the project?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at these items that was approved in 2019. And you know what? I, in the interest of time, let me do a wide research and bring whatever was approved. It was not a project. It was mostly just moving forward with the research and development. It was not the project the way it's designed today. But I will, I will bring it up, and I have a, you know, use my five minutes in a later time. But again, with that 14% cap that cannot be, I don't know if it can be removed or not, I cannot support this, this, this increase. I, I, I really believe that we need to work on removing that cap. I believe we have to work on increasing the number of engines in case we need it. We can't build this whole thing and just be a reserve as to just fire it up when you, when you're, when you need it. We have to generate power and sell it in open market so we can offset our costs, if we can do that. That was part of the project that I was, I was supporting. And just for the record, in 2019, or it was 2020, when this, this chambers was jam-packed, I sat here until 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. People were rallying on the streets, and it was all a big, big push. I respected that. And I was the decision-making vote. I was the third deciding vote, the third vote to say, "Let's look into it, see if we can do better." And if that is the wrong thing to do, I'm guilty as charged. But let's remember who was here with, most of the people who showed up here, they didn't even live in Glendale. They were from outside the city. All these websites, you know, they, you send a message, they show up. They were rallying the streets. 250 people on front of the, in front of the city hall, on the steps. And then I was the third vote, deciding vote that night. And I'm going to find that too and bring it back about the Grayson project. And Mr. Brotman was the leader of that group. This is what happened. I respected their wishes. And we said, "Let's look into it and see if we can do even better for the city, the green project or what have you." But the way it is designed right now, I will not, I will not support it.
Mr. Garpetian, what website that sends people to council meetings?
I think it's called Call to Action.
No, it's Call to Action. There are, there are, there are groups that, I don't want to say just environmental groups.
That doesn't matter.
You, you sent an, what do they call it? Action Alert? They, they sent an email to 5,000 people. They know they show up from Culver City, from everywhere, and, and, and wear the T-shirts. And they also have the signs that they were larger than A and A.
Mr. Kasakian.
Call to Action websites. And you know what it is. He knows. He knows.
Mr. Kasakian, jump in, please. You've got.
I'd like to make the motion for 8A1 and 8A2.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will reluctantly second that motion. Not reluctantly because I don't want this project to go forward, but because of having to pay the tariffs.
Agreed. Understood. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asateryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to 8B.
8B, Glendale Water and Power, regarding introduction of the ordinance authorizing issuance of electric revenue bonds. One ordinance authorizing issuance of electric revenue bonds, 2025.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. This is GWP's night. So GWP's financial plan was to issue revenue bonds in three tranches, as you may recall, of approximately $166 million each. The first and the second tranches were issued back in 2024, and the third tranche is expected in August of 2025 this year. These funds will be used primarily for the Grayson Repowering Project, as well as for the Shoal Biogas Project, city-owned solar projects, and distribution system improvements. Adrinay Sayyan, our Assistant General Manager of Water and Power, in charge of finance, has a brief presentation if you like more details or if you want to go into questions and comments.
Good evening.
Well, thanks, Adrinay. Would you like to give us a short presentation, a short summary of the issue before us?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of council. Adrinay Sayyan, Assistant GM. Tonight, as Mr. Galanian stated, I'm here for the third, for the introduction of the ordinance for the third tranche of our bonds. We are expected to be having the second reading on June 24th with the adoption of the bond issuance on the 24th as well. We are expected to be meeting with our rating agencies July 24th. Competitive sale of the bonds are scheduled for, are on earmark for August 5th, and the closing of the sale of the bonds is expected late August. So that's pretty much as brief as I can keep it.
Very good. Are there questions? Mr. Brotman?
I have a question, which I know the answer to, but I want you to explain. You told me in the briefing that our COSA is based on an assumed financing rate of 5%. The first, this is the third tranche. The first two tranches came in, you said at 3.93% and at 4%.
That's correct.
You are anticipating this one will be closer to 5, but still below 5.
Yes.
So we are not experiencing any impacts so far that would be outside of what we already budgeted for. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any speakers on this item, Madam Clark?
Not on this item.
None on this item?
Actually, no. There is actually two. My apologies.
Please call the names.
The first is Alex Belikian. You have three minutes.
So I just wanted to start, Artie, he's not here, but I would cancel this. All the boxes have arrived. Nothing's been assembled. So what I would do is I would cancel the project, return the order, and go back to gas generators that burn clean natural gas that will make us plenty of electricity that we can then sell to our neighboring cities and get revenue. But as it stands now, the word misinformation has been thrown around. Dan, the one consistent source of misinformation is you because you keep talking about $175 million in savings. Savings for whom? If you talk to people, they will say that they don't have any savings with their electricity bill, okay? They will say that is misinformation. They will say it is pain. Our sales tax revenue has gone down by almost 10%. That's because people no longer have any disposable income because they are spending it on their electricity bills. Okay? So November 2023, with the exception of Vartan, the bonds for this came up to a vote to distribute $550 million. Not a single one of you voted against it. We knew that it was going to raise electricity rates. Ellen, during the budget meetings, you say, can we maximize sources of revenue? Can you maximize source of revenue? Okay? Source of revenue, those are the citizens of Glendale, okay? With these bonds, because we are not making large amounts of electricity that we can then sell to people, the only source of revenue are the people of Glendale. And every time you approve these additional bonds, that is an additional weight on these sources of revenue, as you call them, I prefer to call them my neighbors in Glendale. So we are not obligated to issue this third tranche of bonds. We only need one person, and I'm hoping I get at least four of you not to inflict any more pain on the citizens of Glendale. But as it stands, this is not something that we need to complete. We can put the brakes on this, reverse course, and go back to the days of clean natural gas generators, which will burn clean natural gas, which will get us more electricity than we need, which will lower electricity costs. That's really the only thing people are thinking about right now. They're not thinking about batteries. They're not thinking about road diets. They're not thinking about pedestrian safety. Every time they open their bill, summer is coming, summer is here, we're having a heat wave. And I just caution you that what you need to do is bring your constituents front and center, and the longer you ignore them, the worse the consequences you will have to pay. Thank you.
Mr. Belikian?
Yes.
Dr. Belikian.
You can call him, Alex.
What is clean natural gas?
Clean natural gas is methane.
Okay. And why, what makes it particularly clean?
So it is not, for example, like diesel fuel or fossil fuels where you're going to have sulfur mostly. So sulfur dioxide that goes, so you get sulfur rain.
It is not, it is not a fossil fuel?
I didn't say that. It's clean natural gas. So when we say fossil fuel, like crude oil, what people look at, okay? So crude oil, when you burn it, there's a high sulfur content, especially in diesel fuel. So that is when you and I were growing up, right? And you had the statues in Italy that were melting because of the acid rain. That is why if you went to clean natural gas, the CNGs that you see on all these buses, clean natural gas. So methane is burned to carbon dioxide and water. Plants use carbon dioxide to make carbohydrates. It's their fuel. The more carbon dioxide there is, the more the plants are going to grow. And this fallacy of greenhouse gases, again, in the end, really what matters to people?
I'm sorry, there's no such thing as greenhouse gases?
I didn't say it's not greenhouse gases.
You said a fallacy of greenhouse gases? I'm sorry. I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline. I just wanted to know when you kept saying clean natural gas, what exactly you were referring to?
Methane.
Happy to.
People's electricity bills are still going to go up on July 1st. That is what they're upset about. And the longer you ignore that, the more pain there will be for you all to have to pay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging my curiosity.
The next speaker, Mike Mohill, is no longer here.
He's not here.
Next is Alan Durham.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, council. I'm Alan Durham. My comment on this was that I read the staff report before coming this evening on this agenda item, and I felt it was really lacking in detail. Obviously, from comments that have already been made about the expected range of interest rates, the council has been much more thoroughly briefed on this third tranche of bond issuance than any information given to the public. Nothing in this presentation was on that staff report. It was simply that we're going to do a third tranche of the bonds. It didn't even have the principal amount of the issuance, much less anything about the timing. I don't even know whether these are fully amortizing bonds or there are, you know, is a bullet principal payment at the end. And, you know, it just seems that staff reports should include, you know, sufficient detail for the public to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that get to the speakers?
We have a caller. Sarah Adams, you're on air. You have three minutes. Sarah Adams?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
I agree with the first two speakers. There's a dearth of information here, but what I think everybody can mostly agree upon is that bonds are typically a bad deal for the public. They are misunderstood by the public, and a lot of people like what they think they're going to buy with them, but they don't understand, they get stuck with the bill, the children, the next generation gets stuck with it. And they don't understand the significant interest payments over time that future city councils will be responsible for bearing. And basically, to vote for issuance of these bonds would be leaving for the city and its residents a great burden after you were all gone. There is discussion tonight about how uncertain the economy is, how the politics are, the supply chains are, and because of all those things that you've already actually said yourself, there is uncertainty that your electric project will not generate sufficient revenue to cover the bond payments. And as the last speaker, or I guess the penultimate speaker said, it's the taxpayers who are going to bear the cost of repaying these bonds. And we've already done it with a 40% increase in our electric bills, and now I've just heard that they're going to go up again. There's a tipping point. And yeah, you can throw good money after a bad idea. You're down in the middle of the river, you want to get to the other way across, but there is a tipping point, and you're going to make a mistake by burdening the city and perhaps with a brutal financial consequence of default or solvency long after you guys are gone. But that is the future that you should be concentrating on and not on the green agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
Who wants to go first? Yes, Councilmember Asateryan.
When we were talking about the COSA and rates way back when, when staff was presenting, you all presented certain numbers of how much the average bill would go up. During that session, I had actually raised that you are, that's not an accurate description of what people are going to end up with because it was picking a certain segment. Time has gone by now. We've had the increases. And what I think the council that voted for it was under the impression it was going to be those smaller amounts. And now people are reaching out with their bills going from $500 to $1,000, from $400 to $700. These are really significant increases for the average family. I'm trying to understand, is there a way that you can bring back those reports to give us a better gauge of how much folks are actually going to be getting charged with this third increase? Those numbers weren't, I remember clearly that presentation, and I know, Mr. Mellon, you weren't the director at the time, but I remember raising that there's no way that this was going to be a $50 increase. So I think what's important is for the council as a whole to have a clear picture of what kind of, how much we're raising utility rates for our community members and this third one that's supposed to be kicking in, what that looks like for them. So I don't know what households you were using. I don't know what tiers you were using, but I remember them being very insignificant in the reports, and then the reality has been very, very different. But I also predicted that, so I just... Can you speak to that?
Yes, I actually can. So thank you for the question. From what I recall, this was when we were talking about the rate increases. We did have a consultant that provided a breakdown, both the average overall and then an average rate for residential, average rate for commercial, and average rate for industrial of sorts. It was basically small and large business. I don't recall what those numbers were off the top of my head, but yes, we did provide an average cost impact to those three very generalized classes. So are you asking, can we show you again what they were or?
Well, I'm actually trying to get a proper gauge of what that third hike is going to look like versus what was presented, which has now, you know, with the two increases, it's very clear that those numbers don't match up to the reality of our people. So I, you know, I have no answers when folks say something because one thing was presented, something else is happening.
Councilmember Asateryan, valid question. Staff in GWP are actually working on an update report dealing with the rates that should come from the council, if not on June 3rd, definitely on June 10th, just before the planned rate increase that may or may not happen July 1st. So they're working on a report that will include responses to our questions.
Okay. And I think it would be helpful for us, before that item comes, for you to share what numbers you shared with us during that first presentation because I would like to do a comparison. I think that also affords the opportunity for us to perhaps, and I don't know if this requires for us to have an offline conversation and then I bring it up, but I have brought up this whole tier system we have. That first tier is, I don't even know who it's for because I live alone with my dog and all his buddies, turning on the lights on his own and just having a party. Like my, I mean, if I don't qualify for it, I'm almost never home. I don't know who qualifies for that, right? But I've also spoken to that these tier systems actually work against families because the more people you have in your household, you are inevitably using more electricity and more water. And so, you know, are we recommending a system that like people need to live on their own or, you know, not have kids and not be able to utilize? So I don't know when that conversation can happen, but I know this is something I've brought up in many of our conversations in the past. So if it is something we can have offline and then I bring, if it requires that, I bring this, I do think it needs to be addressed at some point because I don't know what the solution is, but it's definitely not this tiered system.
We'll have a conversation around that topic. It's not obviously part of the staff agenda items.
All kind of tied together, right? I mean, yes, okay.
Any other comments? This is an introduction of an ordinance.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Carpetian.
So in our report, it says that this will increase, the maximum debt service is projected to increase to approximately $43,500,000 after the third bond issue. That is the, the cost, like a payment that we have to pay every year?
That's the interest and the principal. Of that $29 million is the interest and the rest is the principal that we have to pay annually towards paying it down.
Okay. And for how long of a loan is this?
30 years.
30 years?
Yes. It's an amortization table, so it shrinks as you go further.
Sure. So for 30 years, 30 years, yeah, they get the interest in the beginning.
That's right.
In upfront, basically.
That's right.
So if you go 30 years, 4, 3, 5, 100, that's 30. And these are, these are for, this is the third bond. Total bond amount is how much?
160, the total is 500 million, a little shy of 500 million.
500 million. So 500 million of bond for 30 years, you're going to pay $1.3 billion.
We're going to pay approximately $1.7 billion by our amortization tables, but it's close enough.
So $1.7 billion. So it's almost twice as much. And how much of our reserves from GWP, the fund reserves that we had, we invested in the project? How much did we put into it? I know it was like a big dollar amount of cash that we had in GWP electric fund, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't have that information, but I can surely look into it. I'm not sure in the beginning how much of the cash reserves kicked in, but the project is about 600, a little over 670, so the difference would be coming from.
So I was correct. 670 was the right number. Okay. I remember it. I remember it was $160, $170, $160 or $170 million that we, we, cash injection basically from our side. And this bond is, if this bond is not, let's say if it's not approved for some strange reason, right? We had, we had our rates increased to pay for the bond, am I correct? To be, to qualify for the bond, basically.
Yes. The bond covenants requires that we have a debt ratio of 1.1, so if we don't issue this third tranche, we can be in violation of the bond covenants and not meet the debt coverage ratio.
And what happens at that time?
I have to refer to Mike.
Councilman Garpetian, so that's obviously a situation we would not, as a city, want to find ourselves in, to not be in compliance with those bond covenants.
I do understand we don't want to find ourselves in that position, but the question is, if you find yourself in that position, what happens at that time?
Generally speaking, I mean, the bonds perhaps can be called, you know, debt can be called as being owed. I don't know, I might have to actually confer with bond counsel. It's not a, it's not a topic that we usually broach because it's always anticipated we're going to comply with those covenants.
Okay. So this is an introduction?
I would just note, it would certainly affect our bond credit, bond rating. We would never, ever get that issued to us again.
Don't loan us money again.
That's right.
We don't follow the covenants.
Right, okay. So this is an introduction today only?
Yes.
And one last thing, Ms. Mayor, is I have some of the items that was approved in 2019, and it's not the project approval. And I will bring the items that was indicated in there. Most of it is for research and development and report, portion of it was for EIR. And also, if you look at those several meetings that we had during the years, there was never talk about raising rates the way it was raised this go around. It's 42%, 3% cumulative is 51% or 2%. If you, if you, if you go back and people go back and watch these meetings, there was never, ever mentioned raising rates by 50% or 52%. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Any other comments, or would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. And we're going to, there's been a couple of requests for information from my colleagues. Please try and have that ahead of time, so when they get it, they can ask you the questions perhaps ahead of the meeting. So we go forward. Okay, ordinance has been introduced. That takes us to 8C.
8C is Glendale Water and Power regarding annual update to Glendale Water and Power's Wildlife Mitigation Plan. One resolution adopting annual update to Glendale Water and Power's Wildlife Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Nager, I'm the City Council. I'm just going to turn it over to Dan Scores, Assistant General Manager of Water and Power, charge of electric.
Good evening, Mayor, any council members. I'm here to present the annual update to the Glendale Water and Power Wildfire Mitigation Plan. The wildfire mitigation plan covers strategies to reduce risks, risks of wildfire caused by electrical equipment and infrastructure. It includes risk assessment, infrastructure hardening, situational awareness, operational practices, and vegetation management. I also wanted to mention that we closely work with our Glendale Fire Department, both in planning this wildfire mitigation plan and compliance to fire code and on a daily basis on the streets of Glendale, working with the field guys and our fire department. So in general, we always constantly strive to implement industry best practices. So here's our wildfire mitigation plan on the slide. It's updated annually, as I mentioned. It limits the likelihood of ignition and limiting the spread of localized fires. We use what we call the California Public Utilities High Fire Threat Area Risk Zones. So we have the different tiers here listed. So, and one of the important things is that there was a new map that's come out of Cal Fire that was published in March, but the CPUC has not adopted it yet. As we go through our map, we see the different risk zones of our wildfire mitigation plan. We got the tier three and tier two areas, and we work closely with the fire department. One of the important fire department initiatives is the Glendale Fire Department's Vegetation Management Program, which requires homeowners to clear and manage hazardous vegetation within 100 feet of structures and homes. As we put the plan together, the areas identified by the CPUC High Fire Risk Threat District, we eliminate all areas where there is no electrical assets. And that's how we kind of derive our map here. Moving forward, here are the GWP completed projects in 2024 to mitigate the risk of wildfires. So you can look at that, and you have the plan in front of you in detail that covers all these information that's shown on this slide. Moving forward, some of the prevention strategies include vegetation management, inspection of our vegetation intrusion and overhead equipment conditions. Our 4 to 12 KV conversion also increases conductor spacing. And then for overhead circuits, we are increasing the use of covered conductors and undergrounding where possible. And we also implement new technologies such as fuse savers and falling conductor protections to minimize the risk of igniting a wildfire. Here's an example of how we trim our trees in Glendale. The basic budget here is about $2.5 million is allocated towards vegetation management. And we also do our tree trimming down to our telecommunications lines as described in the image that you see. And just as informational, we've trimmed 8,100 trees in the tier two, tier three areas. And if you looked at the table we had before, it had 12,000 trees that we trim in a year. So about two-thirds of the trees are in the tier two, tier three areas. Next slide kind of shows you an image of what a covered conductor looks like. We also, in some places, use poles that have fire resistant wrappings or are fire resistant poles, some of the technologies that we use. Some of the other preventive strategies during the high-risk periods, we disable devices that would reclose after automatically opening upon detection of a fault. We also require a visual inspection of feeders after automatically opening a circuit upon detection of a fault. And then we also do what we call preemptive de-energization in high-fire risk areas. And in conclusion, our third-party reviewer, Guide House Incorporated, reviewed our plan and said it aligns appropriately, it includes all the required elements, and is comprehensive with PUC Section 8387. And also just to note, GWP will be preparing a new comprehensive wildfire mitigation plan to be reviewed by a third-party reviewer and submitted to the city council for next year by June 2026. And that's important to note because that's the year where we do a comprehensive wildfire mitigation plan. And as I said, you have a copy of the wildfire mitigation plan, which has all the details. I kind of really briefed you here on the presentation, but you got all the details there, and I'm here to answer questions. Thank you.
So briefly, Dan, the, this third-party evaluator, Guide House, said we're okay? We're doing things correctly?
That's correct.
We're right?
Yes.
Up to the standard of industry care?
Yes. And we've gone through two iterations of the full review by them, so the next one will be the third one.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
We don't have any speakers on this item.
Comments by council members? Mr. Brockman?
One thing, yeah. I know we talked in the briefing about our own protocols for de-energizing, and we do de-energize during red flag events. At least the equipment or the wires that we have running across our open space, right, where there's not good fire access and et cetera.
Yes. Between our Western Bel Air substations up to the Metro Substation, we have a line that goes over the Verdugo Mountains. That's the line we de-energize during the red flag warning or weather warnings that we have from the National Weather Service.
Anytime we have a red flag. Okay, that's good. I mean, the one thing I know, and we talked about this, that I, I think we probably all worry about is the lines that cross the open space that are not ours, that are Edison's, right? And it sounds like, you know, we don't, I mean, we don't have any control over that. I don't even know if we're talking to them about that, but I would like to, I would like you to be thinking about, how do we engage Edison to make sure they're doing all the right things because a fire could start? And it doesn't matter if it's us or them. Well, it does matter because there'll be a lot of lawsuits, but I mean, still, it will affect our community if they, if they're not doing things as well as we do them.
Yeah. Councilman Brockman, I've asked staff to contact people at Edison to see what the information they have on what they do. What we did find is that they do have a web description on a website. A lot of the information is provided to the CPUC, but I don't know if everything is made public. Just to give you a note, during our January 7 event, the wind event, I've gone through that area because our customers had concerns. What I did notice is Edison had kept up the vegetation management on their lines. So at least from my view of what they did in the area through Glendale, it looks like vegetation management's kept up, but we will try to reach out and try to find some type of report or information on how they're doing their vegetation management on that particular line crossing Glendale.
And the de-energizing protocols that they have.
Yes, yeah. One of the things I think we discussed is that the energization of high-power transmission lines, I don't know if they do it in that area because it would affect large city areas, and I'm not sure if they de-energize that line for wind events. There may be a protocol, but again, we don't run it, so we wouldn't be familiar with it. We'll look into it.
So we've extended the question to our Energy Control Center. They're the primary one. We'll talk to LADWP or getting information from LADWP, who talks directly with Edison. So wherever you share borders, basically where the conversations begin and your interchange begins. So that's kind of the pathway, we're reaching out to Edison about what it is they do.
Yes.
I meet with Edison at least once a couple of months. I'm in constant communication, so I'm happy to help.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's an easy one, I think, so not having to go search for information, and you should have a point of contact for them anyway. If you already don't, that's not, okay. I had one question, I'm just going to leave it.
Do we maintain transmission lines or only distribution?
Well, let me get this one. So all of our stuff is distribution, however, we have high-voltage lines, 69 KV lines, even 34.5 in some areas are considered subtransmission. So for all intents and purposes, we just treat it all like distribution. For the line that we were talking about, de-energizing, that's in, there's no customers that are fed off that line. That's a line that's a connection between substations, so it's a little different. But that, that line would be like Edison having a transmission line, right? It's a connection between major points.
Okay. All right. My other colleagues have any questions?
I'll move the item.
Second. Second. Okay, let's take roll call. Were there any, no, I assume no speakers. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Osadarian?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Nagerian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is Item F, Management Services Regarding Glendale Out Pride in the Park Sponsorship Request. One motion approving a sponsorship request of up to $5,000 for the Glendale Out Pride in the Park event with Glendale Arts as the fiscal sponsor. Two resolution of appropriation.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Nager, I'm a member of the City Council. This item is in front of you as in response to direction from council to consider a sponsorship request of up to $5,000 for the 2025 Glendale Out Pride in the Park, which is their fourth annual queer family picnic to take place on June 7, Saturday, at Adams Square Mini Park. And the Glendale Arts will, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, will be their fiscal sponsor and will manage the finances for this event. We're seeking direction from council.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, direction.
We have one speaker.
Let's hear from the speaker.
Beth Brooks. Beth Brooks, yes.
Yeah, I spoke already on this before. I think that, you know, just you never met money you didn't want to pay out. I'd like to know, so I don't know that you have, you need a fiscal sponsor to give money to any organization, so I could start an organization and find a fiscal sponsor that had nothing to do with me because Glendale Arts has nothing to do with Glendale Out. I mean, they're not, they're not, they're like apples and oranges. So I could just find a fiscal sponsor who's a 501(c)(3) or whatever it's called, is a charity, and then start an organization by a domain name, and start an organization and come here and ask for $5,000. I'm just wondering, and then like if I wanted to educate renters, so I'm just wondering that that's, that's how it works. Because I know with Black in Glendale, which I only learned a couple of weeks ago, you actually did give money to college scholarships for that organization. They weren't a 501(c)(3) unless they became one, and they got money in some other way. As far as I know, that's what I remember hearing here, which to me is also really suspicious because you're giving race-based college scholarships based upon, do you typically do that? Do you typically give just Asian scholarships? Do you give Hispanic scholarships? Do you give just white scho, oh, you do? Okay, so I have to talk to some people about getting some scholarships then. I didn't know that, and so I think that if you're going to go that far, you should give German scholarships and Italian scholarships, Irish scholarships, Scandinavian scholarships. I don't see why everybody shouldn't just come and get some scholarship. So I'm going to make it a point to, to think about that. So yeah, I think that, you know, again, just going to spend money because I heard people need to be valued and that if you give them money, they have value, even though I think you should give yourself value. You don't need to be validated externally, but, you know, I know you're going to give them the $5,000, and it doesn't matter because you really have never met money you didn't want to dole out. Yeah, you really haven't. It's really something out of this world.
Is your objection, ma'am, to, are you done with your comments? Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is your objection to the event or to the city funding the event?
I object to funding that doesn't seem necessary. I object in the day of GoFundMe to funding that doesn't seem necessary. If this organization, because I had the 44 second sub, if this organization disavows going into bathrooms and taking pictures of girls, which actually was not at RDY, it was at the Glendale Galleria, if this organization disavows that, I also think that would be, that would be also a good thing that you should request because I don't think you should be giving, you know, to an organization that wouldn't disavow that. I think that's, that's another thing, but mostly... But mostly, it's about money.
Okay.
It's about money. Stop, you know, just spending money because I'll bring in, you know, 50 people who want $5,000. Why not? If they get $5,000, why shouldn't everybody in Glendale get? Start an organization to get a fiscal sponsor and get $5,000. Why? There's no stopping everybody. I just think this, you know, this has to end at some point, especially these days with GoFundMe. Thank you.
Time, you're referring to time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the clock was, okay.
We do have a caller.
Okay, let's take the caller.
The caller is Cory Decola. Cory, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council, City Staff, and Mayor Najarian. I appreciate you taking my call. I want to give my support for proposed offer for $5,000 for the Glendale Out Pride in the Park event. You know, it's an event for all, it's not limited to just certain people. And, you know, they've been hosting it for four years now, going on the fold here. And, you know, it's an amazing opportunity to meet your neighbors, have some fun. And, you know, I noticed some divisive comments from the previous speaker, and what she doesn't understand is that we're a community. And with this, with these events, and this event in particular, does is bring this community together. So I would just like to, once again, support this event. And, you know, it doesn't matter if Glendale Arts is sponsoring them. You know, we, our organizations, come together and work together as one. We don't need to be as divisive as some of these speakers were tonight on many of these topics of discussion. So I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you again for allowing me to speak, and you all have a wonderful night.
Thank you, and that is all.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember.
During the last meeting, I had asked for clarification on the process. I don't see anything in the report, so can you walk us through? Because it says, again, it still says up to $5,000. What are, what's gonna be the mechanism? What's the process?
Councilman Najarian, if the approval is for a reimbursable process for up to $5,000, Glendale Arts, as the fiscal sponsor, will need to provide invoices to our finance department to essentially reimburse the cost.
Okay, so it's not that we're giving an amount and then, okay.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, Mr.
Take a comment, and I want to just clarify on that point. I think when we talked, Mr. Golanyan, you said there's two ways we could do it. One is we respond to invoices. But a less, I guess, administratively burdensome way is we would write them a check for $5,000. They go through the process and account for the use of that $5,000. If there's any amount that's left, they cut us a check back.
Correct.
And that's something, I have spoken to them, that's something that they can do. And, you know, they have QuickBooks, so we can always see what, what the money's been spent on. They'll show us the invoices and everything. And they report that back to us kind of at the end, just to save a lot of the, I guess, complexity administratively. So I mean, I guess we could do it.
The less, yeah, the less complex way would be to submit invoices and then get paid.
Couldn't they just submit all the invoices all at once?
Maybe.
So that's what I would feel comfortable with.
Yep, couldn't do that.
No, I don't like the back, like we give and then they give back, no, just.
Mr. Sharan? I've got a statement to make.
Can I just ask, Councilmember Brotman was gonna make a disclosure relative to?
Yes, let me make a disclosure that my domestic partner is on the board of Glendale Arts. She does not receive any money from them, any compensation, and has never been reimbursed for any expenses. She's just purely a volunteer.
I think that disclosure should have been made several meetings ago. And I think it's critical that everyone, and maybe I've got this analysis wrong, and please correct me, that everyone followed the appropriate ethical rules that govern the city. The decision to agendize an item involving Glendale Arts after it was continued until last week was a mistake. And I believe it ran afoul of the ethic rules that we all operate under, namely, the government code, FPPC regulations, the City of Glendale conflict laws, and the common law. Under California Government Code, Section 1091, a public official is considered to have a conflict of interest in a contract if they have a financial interest in it, either directly or indirectly. Specifically, Section 1091A provides that a public officer shall not be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity or by anybody or board of which they are a member. The interest of a spouse or domestic partner is imputed to the public official, particularly where the spouse holds a position, such as a director, with authority or a fiduciary duty to the contracting entity. In this case, as a director of Glendale Arts, a director has a fiduciary duty to Glendale Arts. While Section 1091 does allow for certain non-interest exceptions, those exceptions are narrowly construed and typically require that the official disclose the interest and abstain from participating in the decision-making process. Now, in cases where the official or their spouse holds a management position or stands to gain professionally or reputationally from the city's funding decision, the conflict may rise to a level of a prohibited interest under Government Code, Section 1090, which imposes stricter, non-wavable ban on participation. Additionally, under the FPPC regulations, a public official must disqualify themselves from participating in any decision where there is a reasonably foreseeable material financial effect on a nonprofit organization with which their spouse is affiliated in a leadership capacity. To preserve the integrity of public trust and avoid both actual and perceived conflicts of interest, the city should refrain from approving any financial support or contractual arrangement with any charitable entity on whose board a council member's spouse serves. Doing so will be consistent with the letter and spirit of California Conflict of Interest laws. Now, the code says that there are non-interests and there are remote interests. Someone who is a director on an organization, receiving no money, receiving no compensation, receiving no reimbursement, still has an interest under Section 1091.5A8. And it says, it says that an officer or employee shall not be deemed to be interested in a contract if his or her interest is any of the following. So this is the exception. And they specifically have a, have a term for the non-compensated officer of a nonprofit tax-exempt corporation. If one of its primary purposes supports the functions of the body or board or to which the body or board has a legal obligation to give particular consideration and provided that the interest is noted in the official records. So the key here is that Glendale Arts is not a body or board that has, to which the city council has a legal obligation or to give particular consideration. What kind of organizations are those? Glendale Open Space and Parks, Friends of Glendale Library, Police Foundation. Those are the types of organizations that are answerable to the city council, and they have a direct responsibility to the, an obligation. GYA is another one. Glendale Arts does not fit into that. Therefore, a spouse of a council member has a remote interest in which not just have a declaration of that interest being made, but an abstention from any voting. Now, I've looked at this up and down. I've searched the case law. I've read the League of California Cities' Guide for Conflicts of Interest. The key is, what type of organization is Glendale Arts? Aside from any appearance of impropriety, this giving of money to an organization certainly raises the stature of the spouse, who is a director of that organization. So I think it's absolutely wrong that we go this manner. And it was, I think, the city attorney, I was wishing that you had chimed in earlier. We spoke, and your only advice was, well, he just has to declare it. But that is not the rule. And if there is a question about this, because there are civil and criminal penalties attached to it, this should be resolved by the FPPC the same way Mr. Carpetian and I had to write a letter and get their final answer on an issue involving this. And if the council, knowing this, you're put on notice that, that there may be a problem with this, and going forward with it is an intentional act that may lead to you to have some liability. Now, Mr. Garcia, if there's any question, you're not the final arbiter of this, but you should at least be giving the advice to Mr. Brotman and anyone else that we need an FPPC decision on this thing. We should not be voting on it in this manner. That's, that's my problem with this, at this point.
Would you like me to briefly address?
Unless I'm missing something.
Sure, so, thank you, Councilmember Mayor Najarian. My office did review this issue. And I'm, so there's two exceptions under the, and you're right. So basically, any, any contract or any, any grant that is deemed to be a contract, and I think this would be deemed to be a contract, could give rise to a conflict under Government Code, Section 1090, which provides that no, no council member or no official shall be financially interested in a contract approved by them. So one of the exceptions for the exception, the non-interest exception, is that of a non-salaried member of a non, so it's A7, of a non-salaried member of a nonprofit corporation, provided that his interest is disclosed to the body or board at the time of first consideration of the contract. So, you know, arguably, it could have been disclosed at the prior item. But again, that was, that was just whether or not to put this item on the agenda, not actually to consider that.
A7, if I may interrupt you, you're misreading that. That's a member. That's not a director or someone in a position of leadership. The statutes and the guide for city attorneys makes that distinction. It's a difference between being, let's say, a member of the Historical Society and being a director. So A7 does not apply, and that is not a safe harbor to, to anyone whose spouse is, is a member. And there is case law on that. I didn't have that. But I'm telling you, my research says there is a difference between, I mean, you can tell. Seven talks about a non-salaried member. Eight is that of a non-compensated officer.
I would just also note that those exceptions that apply with respect to, there's a distinction between spouses, partners, and people who are the actual member. If, you know, I'm certainly willing to go back and look at this further so we could provide clarification, and then.
But the interest flows from the spouse to the council.
Again, yeah, I'm probably not prepared to debate this in full at this time, so.
Shouldn't it go to the FPPC? I mean, seeing that there's a legitimate question here.
So what I would.
Why do you want to take that liability in giving us?
Mayor, I don't necessarily want to take the liability. What I would say is sometimes it's a, it's a straightforward question. And I, my staff had looked at it, and I thought, I thought I had the right response. I would like the opportunity to, to look at it further and see if there's additional information that I'm missing. And then we can provide a follow-up opinion to, to the council.
So just to summarize in a sentence.
So, yeah.
The, the safe harbor in seven of a member is different than eight, where it talks about an officer. One involves a run-of-the-mill member of an organization. Eight deals with officers and directors. Anyway, that's, that's just my point. So I don't think, I mean, I would caution my colleagues who are voting on this.
And I would just, I would say.
It's an ethics law. Are we throwing ethics laws out the window?
No, I'm laughing at the fact that, why, why is the sitting council member having to bring this to us? Like, what if it wasn't Mr. Najarian? Like, why, why weren't these things like? And what if we didn't have an attorney on the dais? I just. And we did take that step.
Again, my staff looked at it. We conferred this particular issue that Councilman Najarian is raising. I wasn't aware. He, he didn't share his information with me before. So I obviously didn't have a chance to provide input on it. We were aware of the issue, that we had, we had the, we had the conversation with Councilmember Brotman to, to make the disclosure. There's a, maybe a disconnect on my end that I'm not, I'm not catching at the moment. But again, we were, we were prepared to address it. I'm just, you know, this additional information I was not aware of, and I'd like to, and I would recommend continuing the discussion so that we can, you know, I wouldn't advise the council to make a decision until we run this down. And again, I would know, first of all, a couple of things. If there, if there is a dispute about this or there's a disagreement, that's always an option is for someone to seek an FPPC opinion, now that the, the FPPC provides opinions on 1090 issues. And, but I would note that I don't believe any other council member would have liability for voting on something where it's later found that is a violation of, of 1090. The council member with the conflict would have an issue, but nobody else on the council would. But again, and I apologize, I, you know, I had even conferred with my staff before the meeting to make sure we had the right information, and I'm.
I'll be happy to share my research.
So, so this doesn't prevent the city council from making contributions to Glendale Arts necessarily? Just puts Councilmember Brotman in conflict, potentially?
So what Mayor Najarian is contending is that because of his position, because of his registered domestic partner's position as a non-compensated officer of Glendale Arts, which is a nonprofit tax-exempt corporation, that, and it doesn't serve one of these, these functions regarding legal obligation to give particular consideration, that means that Councilmember Brotman's interest in the contract is remote as opposed to a non-interest. So when an interest is remote, he can't participate in the discussion. He has to abstain versus when it's a non-interest, he can participate. Just make that disclosure. That's the key, and we do need to run that to ground.
Okay. My, so when Glendale Arts was, had a contract with the city to run the Alex Theater, did they fit into that category by definition?
There probably would have been a stronger argument that they would have at that point. I think Mayor Najarian is agreeing with that.
I would agree with that, that they would.
Because they were, they were, they were running an asset, one of our assets.
For sure.
So we can certainly run those issues to ground, so.
Furthermore, in conclusion, there are specific rules regarding being a fiscal sponsor with contracts which specifically outline the duties and obligations of both parties. And I don't know if one has been executed between Glendale Arts and Glendale Out. But to give money, to say they're just a fiscal partner, a fiscal sponsor, without seeing such an agreement, I think also is, is an end around this whole fiscal sponsor issue. I have a sample fiscal sponsor contract, if anyone wants to see it. I have a sample fiscal sponsor contract if anyone wants to see.
Can I make a quick comment on that? Because Glendale Arts has been a fiscal sponsor for Glendale Out.
I'm sorry. I don't want to... Because there's a potential of a conflict, and I know that's...
Well, you want me to answer that question?
I'd prefer that it come from somebody else. I'll have the discussion with Councilmember Brotman until we've resolved this issue.
I can tell you that for my... For me, I am open to the idea of working with Glendale Arts as a nonprofit. I don't want this to be construed or configured for it to be a simple pass-through relationship where they receive the funds and then release it to another third-party organization. That does not have the same standing that Glendale Arts does. I think that sets a bad precedent. I don't think it's a good way for us... And I understand, I've had conversations with folks who say, well, this is common. It may be common, but to me, it doesn't pass the smell test, because then again, it opens the door for other entities to do and find similar ways to apply for funds. Now, having said that, I will also reiterate that I think the event that happens, the Pride event that happens at the Adams Mini Park every year, is an important event for the community, for those who want to attend it and have that sense of community. So I don't know what other ways there are to support it. I know in the past, departments have been there. I would like to continue that practice. I don't see anything objectionable to that. And also finding ways to figure out how to do this in an appropriate way where we can... And from my understanding from last week, I don't think anyone objects to this based on the event or what it represents. If there's a way to do this that is appropriate, ethical, transparent, let's do it that way, and I would support that. And I know that time is of the essence, so I don't know how we do it before the event, but I am not staff and you are, so that's all.
Should we continue this to the next meeting?
That would be my recommendation.
If I can just make... I think with everything that's happening, I think it's too messy. I noted during the last meeting, I want to see a clean and clear process. You know, just... Well, you know, they'll give the invoices. It'll be handed over. I don't know what the legal requirements are for what it means to be a fiscal sponsor. This isn't, you know, us donating out of our pockets. This is the City of Glendale, and so I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent for anyone else to come in and use the system. I had also spoken about, you know, how we support different events around the city. I know that second part of it is supposed to be coming back. There are many ways that we, you know, take off fees if they're a certain... You know, if they're a nonprofit, if... I will say that there is truth to even after this, like there are other organizations that reached out asking, you know, well, we're also hosting an event, right? And so, again, I think just processes them. But I think, Mr. Garcia, for me, I recognize that this was new to you, but I just... I'm also caught off guard with, you know, we had a conversation about this last week. We had it today, and I never want to be put in a situation where, you know, it leaves it up to us to figure that out, so...
Understood. Like I said, we had thought we'd run it to ground, and we'll get some more information.
Mr. Carpetian?
We continue this item. It will be the fourth time that we're discussing this issue. I think there is a process in place, as Councilmember Asatyan mentioned. Glendale Arts can apply for permits of the park, and they're nonprofit. They can get the discount for it, 50% or 100%. And then the money that they save over there, they can spend on their event. I mean, it's getting really... Sometimes we talk about, you know, we were talking about mayorship here, and it was mentioned that we have all this work to do, and we're talking about the mayorship. This is another item. This is the third time. See how much deliberations we had, and it's coming back again. I'm not saying don't bring it back, but I think Glendale Arts can apply for the permits and get the discount. Give them 100% discount, whatever that number is, 50%, whatever the rule is. We created a rule for everyone to follow, and let's just do that and move on. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's fair to vote on this if, since we've asked Mr. Brotman to pause.
Well, I don't think we can vote on it based on this. Can we?
Well, Councilmember Brotman...
I mean, Mr. Garcia, I would like for your office to look at the details and get back to us. Because I don't want to run into this in the future, and I think there needs to be clear direction to us and to Mr. Brotman. It puts us in a very uncomfortable position, because I want to be able to support that event, and, you know, I...
So procedural. Can we bring this back? Can we just continue it? Because there are a few things I want to say, but I can't say them now.
Yeah, we'll bring it back. There might be, if it turns out you are conflicted, we'll have to also... We will also analyze whether or not it has to come back, be asked by another council member to be agendized. Yeah, we'll look at that issue as well.
Okay, so with no objection, we'll... There may be an objection, but let me propose that we bring this back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
No strong objections. That's what we will do. Thank you. Next item.
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer in the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have one public speaker, Beth Brooks. You have five minutes.
And you get the speaker award today. Most valuable and...
You are a rock star.
No, please.
You are.
I'm gonna get you so angry next week. No, next week they're gonna hate me.
Oh, no, I could compliment you, but still, you know, so... But you're a rock star. You are. Okay, so I want to thank John, who showed me in the HTML version of the agenda that if you click on the little attachment, it opens up all this stuff, which doesn't work on my phone. And I do everything on my phone. I even make Excel spreadsheets on my phone, so it doesn't work on my phone for some reason, but it will work on my computer, and that changed my life. Okay.
It should work on your phone.
Okay, okay. For Mr. Galanian, Zoom meetings of city council meetings are in Pasadena, Oakland, Rancho Palos Verdes, Malibu, Fairfield, Claremont, Bishop, Whittier, and Fullerton. Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm obsessed with Pasadena and their website and, you know, how they run things. And so, also today at the housing authority meeting, it was like an epiphany to me to learn that Mr. Calvert... You were waiting on Mr. Calvert to actually... Because I think the man has like 50 hats. I don't know how he even sleeps at night. That when I looked at the charter and I saw everything that he was responsible for, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. And I actually think that that's a big reason, probably, why the housing division is really kind of an afterthought. Even if you look at the website, it's not even updated. It's really an afterthought. Every time I've heard him speak, it's never about that. He's never reached out to me. He's heard me speak. He's talking about planning, historic preservation, everything else, but not housing, because not every city does it, but Pasadena does do it. Pasadena has removed housing, on the website at least, and from whoever runs the housing division, from the community development department. So they've separated it. I know that there's, you know, you have the community development block grant, and that's under HUD, and it has to be called that. They've separated it, and I think that that does a lot for the community, because when they're looking for things... I was looking at our community development. It was like everything under your, you know, dog licenses, you know? And I really think that he does not have the time or the inclination or the number of hours in the day that housing and affordable housing and renters' relief deserves in this city. And I really think that you should pull it out and put somebody else on it or put him on it, but I don't think he would enjoy that. I think he enjoys his hands, you know, in all that other stuff. But that really was an epiphany to me, because I thought, now I get it. Now I get why it's an afterthought. He can't do it, you know? And just because I thought it would be really a fun thing to do, because, you know, because I know you don't want to go home. You know, the director... Oh, yeah, this was... The director shall have charge over the following functions: long-range and current planning, zoning administration, historic preservation, community design, neighborhood services, code enforcement, community outreach, economic development, housing assistance, housing, development and preservation, film promotion and other related functions as assigned. The director shall advise and assist the housing authority, planning commission, historic preservation commission, environmental and planning board, design review boards, city manager, and the council. It's just, I never saw anything like this. So really, my... I know you need a charter amendment, because it's in the charter, but I really think that that would go a long way to moving somebody laterally in that you already pay to head up that department and give it the attention it deserves, because I think it's a very big issue in the city. I think, you know that I talk about it all the time, that people are really struggling, and it really deserves proper attention. And I don't think it can get proper attention this way. That's it, and I want to thank you. You are a rock star.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
No.
Hey, we do have some new business.
Should I go first? Yes. I move that the city attorney or his designee is hereby authorized to execute a conflict of interest waiver submitted by the law firm of Seki Nishimura and Watase LLP, SNW, related to SNW's representation of the County of Los Angeles in the matter of Amir Edwards versus City of Glendale, et al.
Or second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
I move that the claim for damages of Infinity Insurance Company, ASO Jamie Ramirez Solano, claim number 250146B, and hereby is approved for the total sum of $13,471.42. The director of finance is authorized to issue a warrant and set some for delivery by the city attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release.
Or second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Before we go to the memoriam adjournments, I'd like to thank my colleagues for a long day, keeping it together mostly. And pardon my starting the whole timer business, but we should just start thinking about that, and I'm glad we're wrapping it up before 11:00. So the first adjournment in memory of...
Yes, I would like to adjourn in memory of Euric Gazalium.
Thank you. And the second memoriam is for Grandma Lee, for lack of a better moniker.
I'd second the motion to adjourn in their memories. Thank you.
Lee are adjourned.